Welcome, everybody, to 28th Plenary. We show you, sir, the address of our conference. Before we get started, could we please hold the floor? Christian Walk. Christian Walk. Everyone, please rise and join us at the meeting. And you're recording? All right, I'd like to note that all public sessions of the South White Alternative Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed electronically or documented to public access. So this meeting is a little bit different agenda, so I'm going to hand things over to Attorney Zager to kind of go over the guidelines for the CND's process. Attorney Zager?
Thank you, President. I'll try to talk to him.
I got you.
There's a couple of hearings now that are open. Could be easy to everyone to love. As President Morgan mentioned, the proceedings here is a bit different than other meetings, which may intend in connection with this particular project as being proposed. I do have a significant amount of preliminary information before it gets to actual testimony and presentation of documentary evidence, so please bear with me to go through this. This meeting of the South White Alternative Commissioners is for review and ultimate decision on the conditional use application and request for conditional use approval filed by E&amp;D Hotel Partnership LP and for a project referred to as Premier Center Luxury Requirements. Two prior planning commission meetings involved this matter took place and this conditional use application. The meeting was held personally due to the governor's COVID-19 executive order. At each of those planning commission meetings, there was opportunity for public comment. For this hearing this evening, the legal requirements established by the Minnesota Planning Code, the Minnesota Territory Code, the Southern Diactics, some orders applied with. This hearing notice has been duly published, and it has been pressed. The property has been posted after. And notice was mailed to property owners in the facility in accordance with the Territory Standards, so to call requirements. In addition, beyond the legal requirements having been met, there has been notice on the Territory's website and social media. In addition, this hearing is being made available for view
From the work of the young, it looks like he put a duffel as part of a
On the go-to meetings, virtual platform. The public notice did indicate that South White Alternative could not guarantee that the virtual platform would be fully functional for both virtual public comment, given technological constraints in the facility. According to the public notice, any person who wants to participate in the comment will be advisedable to attend the person. However, I am pleased to report that it does appear that the virtual platform will be working well this evening. Because this is a formal public hearing, under the zoning law of Pennsylvania, there are specific procedures to be followed and will follow this evening. As I said, it differs from the normal proceedings supposed to be used to attend it. As a public hearing, you'll know that there is a court order, Snodder up here on stage, Mr. Gallagher is here, and everything that is said by anyone who speaks will be taken down verbatim. Every person who speaks this evening will be sworn in by Mr. Gallagher, same in mass and same individual, and I'll cover that shortly. Any documentary evidence that anyone wishes to present, including the applicant, is going to be marked as exhibit. So as you can see, it's more formal, more structured than a typical public meeting gives. Now for some house speaking protocols. All meetings are electronically recorded, including this one. Substantive discussion of the conditional use application will begin in just a little while. I'll take man, but I'm commenting on the Territory Department's political conditional use. The applicant will then proceed with his presentation. Following the applicant completing his presentation, EOC or Commissioner members may ask questions and dialogue with the applicant. I have been made aware that Attorney Ronald Corkery has been engaged by two residents, Mr. David Berg and Mr. John Carey, to present a case and oppositions to the approval of this conditional use. Mr. Corkery will have an opportunity to present his case, and he'll also have an opportunity to ask questions to the applicant's witnesses, effective across the convention. Prior to general public comment, Mr. Corkery will complete this part of the case, and then after that, public comment will begin. There is a vote here at the entrance to this auditorium. Residents indicate they wish to be on the man list or those of the public meetings relating to this project. Because the sole purpose of this particular reading is the conditional use in this hearing, public comment will occur as part of this hearing rather than independently from it. Also in the back of the auditorium, actually outside the auditorium, is another vote. It's a vote for anyone who wishes to make public comment, wishes to speak this evening. Please be sure that you do not get two votes mixed up, and of course, if you wish both, then it is easy. Do sign in the appropriate vote. The signing book will remain in the back in its current position until the applicant concludes the applicant's presentation at which time it will be delivered to the board president. If you do not sign in by that point in time, you will not have an opportunity to participate. So if you have not yet signed in, my recommendation would be to get after I finish these opening comments that you assume thereafter, go ahead and make sure you do sign in. Public comment will take place in the order of names appearing in the signing book. We will call, probably, Commissioner Borgin will call each person's name, at which time you need to come forward to the lectern, present on the stage, on the floor. You would need, as in all other public meetings, to provide your name and address. Each person who wishes to provide a public comment will be allowed three minutes. Staff will indicate, I believe, this location right here, by below me. When the three minutes is up, you will also endeavor to pull up a blue folder at the point in time of your 30 seconds left in your time. It is the intent of the board to remain stripped for this time, and the board president will most likely stop you at the end of your three minutes. Comment will be by one person at a time only, and a person may not give up his or her time to someone else or to extend the time of that to a person. It's up to you that you may want to consider rendering giving your personal statement first and saving the questions toward the end of your three minutes. That way, if there are answers worth coming from the applicant or anyone else, it doesn't count toward your three minute time. Everyone is asked to make courteous throughout the presentation and each public comment, just to see if one everyone wants to be so forgiving. There will be no shouting, jeering, cheering, booing, cat calls, other comments unlike during public comment period or otherwise. That includes the applicant's presentation and the presentation of his corporate. We do ask the public to consider limiting duplicative comments on the matter. If your comment is all or you may, certainly it's up to you. Feel free to defer and not give the comment intended. Again, it's up to you. In many instances, the public comment may not be addressed by the applicant at that time, and even questions may not necessarily be addressed at that time. We do ask that the comment, the public comment, be related to the testimony that's presented by the applicant or questions or comments that may come from the board. And that is because the purpose of the conditional use hearing is limited. This is not a hearing in which an approval of entire project is being considered, rather it's to deal with specific legal requirements for the conditional use. If a township representative feels that any person is being disruptive or otherwise getting out of line, the police or township staff have the right to escort that person out of the hall. We do ask that everyone respect this procedure, so the public comment can be conducted in an efficient manner, clearly, and as you can see, in orderly fashion. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, this meeting does add a virtual component to it on the go-to meeting platform. Participants' names will not be displayed during the meeting on the virtual platform. All participants will be required to mute their microphones or not participating in the dialogue. If a participant wants to make a public comment or has a question on a specific topic, they must type their name and address into the chat feature. Meeting facilitator will eventually identify and call individual requesting to speak. If someone is participating via phone, they will be not opportunitied also to ask questions. Comments, once the individual has unmuted their microphone, can identify themselves with the name and the address. If prior to this meeting, someone has identified a question or comment to township staff and has requested they have an opportunity to speak, facilitator, Mr. Coke in the back, will identify and call that individual that's requested to speak. As I said, because this is a public hearing, anyone who wishes to must be sworn in by Mr. Gallagher or the applicant. What's going to happen to argue that, and Mr. Gallagher is initially going to swear in for witnesses for the applicant. Then, when we get to the point of public comment, people swear in all witnesses, all persons, all residents who may wish to speak. And if you're not sure if they wish to speak, my recommendation is to be sworn in, because everyone who wants to speak must be sworn in. And on the virtual platform, we're going to endeavor to have the public speaking at one time, if that's set to break, but it's not allowed to be individually, and then when it comes time for telephonic commentary, that will be individual swearing in. The next topic I'm going to address is the legal concept of standing. Everyone is entitled to speak during the public comment period. However, there is a difference as compared to prior planning commission meetings and even board commissioner meetings. Each resident, each person that wishes to speak, he should decide whether he or she is simply speaking to provide comment for consideration by the board and for others, or whether in addition to providing a comment for consideration, you wish to have what refers to as party status in this matter, for purposes possible, if you only explain. In order to have a party status, it is necessary for the resident to have what is known as legal standing. Legal standing under the zoning law means that you are a "person agreed." It is not sufficient to simply have general interest law citizens have, or would have in holding township regulations or having an opinion on matters such as this conditional use. Human area or financial interest, such as an impact on your property value, maybe relevant, geographic proximity, maybe irrelevant, but there could be other factors. So when you come up to speak at the lectern or for that matter of the virtual platform, if you wish to have party status, please say so. Otherwise, it will be assumed that you wish to make a comment, and if you don't wish to party status. If you do choose to seek party status, then the applicant, through Mr. Preston, the attorney, will have a right, but not necessarily an obligation, to ask any questions. This is known as board here. Those questions are intended to permit the applicant to ascertain whether or not they have objection to the standing of individuals who wish to speak. If there is objection, the board will then decide how to proceed with that. With those possibly key matters we have to take care of, I turn my attention to the specific purpose of this evening's hearing. First, let me say that it is not the intention of the board to actually make the decision this evening. We do anticipate extensive commentary from the applicant, from Mr. Corkery, and from residents, and there will be a part cut off at the end. As I said, the purpose of this meeting is to review and make a decision on the conditional use application. I would briefly explain in general terms what that means and what the legal framework is. As many of you, perhaps most of you, know, the Planning Commission is an advisory agency in South White Alternative District and other jurisdictions. After hearing from the applicant, townships staff, and the public, Planning Commission made a recommendation on the proposed conditional use to the board commissioners. That recommendation was that the conditional use not be approved. The actual conditional use decision, however, is made by the board of commissioners. This body is in front of you here this evening, to my right here, or near left. Essentially, the board commissioners have sit this evening, and if these proceedings are continuing, which I expect they will be, they sit as judge and jury upon this matter, and they are obligated to follow the law in all manner. So we're here to deal with conditional use. Let me explain that just a little bit. A conditional use involves legal standards and procedure. The ultimate decision by the board is not a matter of preference or discretion for the township and its officials. In other words, it's possible that one or all members of this board up here might be personally very much against the application, but be legally constrained to go for it. The opposite could hold true. They may be very much in favor of the project, but be legally constrained to have to go against it. Because as I said, this is not a matter of popularity, this is not a matter of preference, this is a matter of applying the law to specific facts that are presented through the applicant and through your testimony as witnesses of the public. I would also say that under the law, a conditional use is effectively ordained to be a permitted use, as long as the objective criteria set forth in the ordinance have been met. For anyone who's been in front of the zoning board, watched a Sunday hearing, it's identical to what occurs with a special exception. The objective criteria that I referred to a moment ago are those that have some measure of definitely have specifics. Subjective standards are those that are vague, generalized, perhaps make total opinion or feelings. Once the applicant presents evidence that the objective criteria the ordinance has been met, which they think they have so, the burden of proof shifts to objectors to prove in the standards of not met. Speculation, pure personal opinion are ordinarily not going to be sufficient to satisfy the burden. As for subjective or generalized criteria, which are basically those non-objective matters on which reasonable minds can differ, to deny conditional use approval based on such criteria, it is necessary for an objective to prove, again, non-speculative opinion, that this particular conditional use application would impact the public health, safety, and/or welfare in terms of these specific subjective criteria more adversely than would other conditional conditional uses that might be proposed reciting. Please keep in mind, the board commissioners and each of its members may not be an applicant for or against a conditional use application such as this, because there's a note there that you sit essentially as judge and jury. Further, keep in mind that this is a use approval application, in this case, a request to proceed with the CND overlay. It is not an approval from a site of an overall redevelopment, that is, in the process. Rebuilding, which is a separate process, can be much more detailed, thorough, and lengthy than a conditional use matter such as this, is something that would follow if the applicant is successful in the conditional use approval process, unlikely to follow if they're not. As the meeting is aware, the conditional use process this evening is only one component of the overall redevelopment approval process. Tonight, have the E&amp;D Hotel to see the approval from the board for its proposed conditional use, which is a commercial retrofit overlay development. I'm going to take just a moment to break down that statement. Conditional use is what I touched on already. TND is an acronym for the traditional neighborhood development. This particular TND is a subject that the CND is a commercial retrofit overlay, and something that will be described in at least a little detail later, briefly by Mr. Man Park in their future. Let me explain in general terms what I meant by overlay. As many of you know, a zoning map designates zoning districts of all properties in township. It's general. The zoning ordinance has particular requirements that exist for proposed development within each of those zoning districts. An overlay is a zoning mechanism by which those requirements are lawfully modified, supplemented for property development or property in township. Generally speaking, across the board, across Pennsylvania, some overlays are mandatory, and others are propped in alternatives made available to property developers. The latter is the type that we're hearing about this evening. Once the developer opts in to unauthorized overlay, in this case, TND retrofit overlay, those alternative zoning ordinance provisions apply to the extent that the ordinance itself. For practical purposes this evening, you can view the overlay that we're talking about this evening as essentially being used as an alternative zoning for the subject property. And of course, that property is located on the south side, Route 22, North Route 22, East of Old Drive. It is incumbent upon the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the zoning ordinance requirements for the TND, this commercial retrofit overlay district of the TND. And in reviewing this conditional use application and all the information that's presented throughout this hearing, it will be the board's job to ask whether or not E&amp;D Hotels have met their urban under规定的s in the law. As I said earlier, the Planning Commission has the right to recommend, or to recommend anybody, and the board commissioners will render a decision. If there were to grant conditional use approval, has a right to attach reasonable related conditions. The Planning Commission did not recommend any conditions because it recommended denial of conditional use. If this board were to include that the requirements the ordinance have been met, but that the attachment to the conditions is necessary to assure the ordinance requirements and purpose are met, and if the public is protected, relevant reasonable conditions may be included as part of such approval. As I indicated earlier, one of the main differences between this proceeding and what you may be used to at planning commission meeting or board commissioners meeting is that exhibits are formally marked. And because of that, there are good and ten ordinance exhibits marked in advance, and I'm briefly going to mention them, so if everyone is aware of what they are. B1 is the conditional use application form filed by the township by the applicant. B2, which is a public notice appearing for this evening with the letter to East Ten Publishing, dated June 7. B3 is a certification property posting, dated June 18. B4 is a certificate of mailing, dated June 18, 2021. B5 is an aerial behalf of the property. B6 is the Planning Commission's daily recommendation to the developer, dated March 4, 2021. B7 and B8 are continuances requested slash granted by the applicant through its attorney. B9 is a collection of materials made available by the township to the public on the township website and labeled BOP agenda packet, Premier Center Conditional Use Review, and it consists of 203 pages. Exhibit B10, also materials made available by the township on its website to the public in advance this evening and this year, and it is labeled Combined Applicant Conditional Use Exhibits, and that consists of 301 pages. You send either the applicant or Mr. Corkery or a resident that wishes to specifically use any of those individual documents that are part of B10, and depending on circumstances, they may individually mark them again, but for purposes of record, those exhibits right now are en masse at B9 and B10. As for the zoning proceedings, and do recognize that the conditional use hearing is a zoning proceeding, it's the one zoning proceeding that does not occur in front of the zoning board, rather occurs in front of the board commissioners. But for zoning proceedings such as this, formal rules of evidence do not apply, but the board does have the legal authority to curtail comment that is redundantly irrelevant or disrespectful. Following completion testimony of public comment, the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, if desired, and then ultimately an opportunity for legal arguments. A participant in the attorney, in this case, Mr. Corkery, will also have a right to present legal argument. Because the board approved these types of matters, it's in the first instance on the applicant, conditional criteria, Mr. Preston, when it's our last. Under the law, like the zoning board in all this proceedings, and for the board commissioners in this particular conditional use proceeding, the board is acting, as I said earlier, in quasi judicial capacity. It is not acting in its political or legislative capacity. As I said, the board has the right, and ordinarily would, and I expect in this matter will, at a conclusion of all testimony, deliberate in executive session. However, in that deliberation, when it occurred, we expect certainly after this evening, and can lead possibly depending on the type of proceeding, there may be more than one deliberation. But during that deliberation, during that, except for, there will be no decisions rendered that enough straw was taken, rather in public session at the conclusion of deliberation, so we can be much like this one, at which ultimately emotion is made, ultimately a decision As I said earlier, if this matter is going to have a hard stop at the end of the end, and it's not concluded by the end of the public participation, then at some point in time following this meeting, another date and time will be set, the board will just conclude public participation. With that backdrop, and I'll have a few more comments as well, over to the board president. With that backdrop, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Man Park. Dave?
Yes, tonight, we got an application for the developed property located at the 20th. Playing proposes the demolition of the existing Parkview Motel, associated buildings, and the construction of 35 time halls, 25 of which run from Crackers Fort Road, six 3 or 4 story mixed buildings, became 2,600, 26,780 square feet of non-residential floors base, and 360 miles, 909 parking spaces, so far transitioned facilities, and 256,435 square feet local space on a .81 acre portion of the 23.55. Subset of property is owned, highly commercial, and TND commercial retrofit overlay. Property is being developed under the TND commercial retrofit overlay district regulations. E&amp;D Partnership LP is the owner and applicant. In addition to the standards of the TND overlay, Section 35031 of the zoning ordinance, standards for all conditional uses, 3518 of the zoning ordinance, also apply to this application. From February 8th to 2021, Planning Commission reviewed and recommended denial of conditional use for application number 2026 along Premier Center luxury park.
At this time, I'll ask Mr. Gallagher to swear in witnesses for the applicant. Because we recognize that people may be coming and going this evening, we're going to defer to the swearing in of witnesses until such time as they have a comment. And when Mr. Corkery presents his case, we have his witnesses sworn in as well. Corkery, sorry.
It's to be turned on. Needs to be turned.
Needs to be turned.
This is the discussion right of the meeting at the board. Three points, one of the factors, the plans that I heard presented, like to make a motion or request that Mr. Long either recuse himself, qualify, or, I don't know, which the document I gave everybody is on the neighborhood website that everybody's pulled off, those were made before he was a commissioner. But they seem to be, the dog will be up, as we realize, the attorney's say, or eventually lead the occasion that somebody might have a feeling, but it will go by the law, but sometimes just judge one of his relatives on feelings, that he's like doing a non-trial for somebody that hit a family member. And here, there were two, three comments in particular that apparently Mr. Long made, one being March 23rd of this year, I get to prefer an old rundown motel. Another one, also on that March 23rd, here's an idea, you buy the property and you can develop it, however pleased that you, otherwise, let's get back to reality, recognize the legal rights of developers, work with them as opposed to against them. And then the third move was, I believe, on March 28th of this year, it is just simple reality that people have become concerned with. If you don't want development, don't develop it urban area. It's really that simple. We, as the general public, don't get to tell developers how to develop their property. We still live in a capitalistic society. Those were three, and it would feel, it would be appropriate that Mr. Long voluntarily recuse himself or that the board had a vote, had a follow-up. From hearing this, obviously, your other members of the township, all of these were specific to this, this stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. I think it would be appropriate if the exhibit that you provided to me and to the board be marked and it's just C4 or C1, not distinguish it from any exhibits that residents, that are common may have. Can I provide a per good cop? Can I hear it, Mr. Sager? Yes, I see. That thing may be, it's something, it becomes eventual, but I see Mr. Corcoran is here, who's representing, Mr. Bailey? What's Mr. Bailey saying? This is my man, why? It's being purposes, I'm not sure. We went to the Polish of saying, I don't know who Scotty, because he walked in.
He lives in lots of development. And the other client lives in, like, two tents of a lot. All of them are in the immediate area where one of the exit roads here goes right in front of their house.
Very good, thank you. I don't know where that.
Sorry.
Sure, and then another thing I would, if I may, on the issue that's in front of the board, I know this happened to play off, and it just recently happened in North Flight Hall, it was a case, I don't remember the exact name, like, the Walmart. And there were several people that won their elections promising to defeat the Walmart. It's not uncommon for people to run anti-development campaigns, attachments, and get elected and then carry out that mandate, in fact, they feel the hack. It doesn't disqualify. It never has. They're rather than have created, they're not, they have the public official stake of the business. I don't see any merit to this at all. John will think you understand, I'm a little confused. And I was aware, part of this evening, that this would possibly be an issue. And so I have, I've been through, I'm familiar with them, and my legal staff has, I don't know the statements, but they hold the law on this. And it's case law applicable to bias prejudice prejudgment and complicity in review. Based on that, I mean, there are a few important points that I need to mention for everyone's understanding. First, I'm going to quote from another case, while an appearance of non-objectivity sufficient to trigger judicial scrutiny, the significant remedy of invalidation often depends on something more tangible. Recusal is required only where the record demonstrates biased prejudice, suspicious disbelief, or prejudgment. Federal First Class Township Code, I quote, "A member of the board shall not be disqualified from voting on any issue before the board solely because the member had previously expressed an opinion on the issue, either official or pre-legal." Another case, general opinion, recusal is warranted where a member who, by any or participates as an advocate or witness publicly expresses previous position or has a financial interest in a fiduciary relationship with a party of interest. Quote another case, this one from 2004, which is a, all these cases are appellate cases. Notably, if a board member thinks he's capable of hearing the case fairly, his decision not to accuse himself ordinarily held upon appeal. So everything I've mentioned so far are very generalized statements, and I suppose legal minds can differ in whether, as I said, applies to disqualified Mr. Long or not, legal minds can differ. So what I think I'd like to do is to provide two concrete examples that you can consider as proof, and I, of course, will give my advice to the board, Mr. Long, following my commentary. The first is an example under the law where recusal is required. A councilman is disqualified from proceedings to consider a developer's conditional use and cycling applications after he expresses opposition to a development at a public hearing and through multiple letters written on council letterhead. In his letter to the councilman, he called his constituents to attend the next council meeting and send the message of their disapproval helped to achieve this latest example of a greedy developer. The council was required to revoke on the application without participation of the biased councilman. Now, for an example where no recusal is required, and this is, again, a appellate decision. It was held by the commonwealth court, a member of the township's board of supervisors. And for those of you that don't recognize, in a first-class township, we have board commissioners, and a second-class township, which is the vast majority of townships in Pennsylvania, we have boards of supervisors. It was held a member of the township's board of supervisors did not need to recuse himself from proceedings concerning a developer's conditional use application, even though he had met the developer three times before a developer's conditional use application, and had made statements to other newspapers indicating he believed the developer would improve traffic conditions. In its ruling, the court ruled that the municipal planning code only prohibits communications between members and parties to a hearing after a hearing begins. The sound of the member's statements to newspaper did not necessarily suggest support for the development, merely his belief the traffic conditions would improve. Based on Mr. Long's social media posts, it appears to me that the situation more closely resembles the latter 2009 case than the former one on the bill case. But what I'm going to do now is based upon the legal analysis that I've conducted, I'm going to ask Mr. Long some questions. So at this time, to gather, we please swear in Mr. Long. Mr. Long, when you made those social media posts that were under the C-1, were you a member of the Southside Township Board of Commissioners?
No.
When you made those social media posts, did you have any idea that you might potentially become a member of the board commissioners?
No.
When you made those social media posts, isn't it correct that Mr. Mobilia was still a member of the board commissioners and there was no vacancy on his board?
Yes.
When you made those social media posts, were you expressing an opinion in favor of this specific proposed development?
No.
Do you enter this hearing having a previous position to approve this proposed conditional use application?
No.
Do you have a financial interest in this proposed development project or a fiduciary relationship with the landowner, developer, or any other person involved in the proposed project?
No.
Do you have any relationship whatsoever with the applicant property and member of the developer?
No.
Do you believe that you are capable of hearing this conditional use application purely and in partiality as required by the law?
Yes.
Thank you. Based on the law, and mine with the answers that we all just heard from Mr. Long, it's my conclusion, legal opinion directed to the entire board, to Mr. Long specifically, that he is not legally required to accuse himself of serving on the board as commissioner of this conditionous proceeding, and there would be no basis for the board to formally disqualify him. However, whether he does or does not accuse himself, it's a personal choice. For Mr. Long to make, the law is not required. Mr. Long, are you going to impeach yourself? I would prefer to convince the board based on the fact that the board denied Mr. Corcoran's motion, Corcoran's petition motion. And recognize the question of my need for clarification, certainly the fact of the board, and what?
I'd like to take a motion to determine that question.
I'm second.
Motion was to deny a request for Commissioner Long to recuse himself from hearing today. So we have a motion on the floor, Commissioner Morgan, a second from Commissioner Sutton. I'll need a roll call from Commissioner A.
You just turn it off.
No, we didn't.
Solicitor Zayer, I'm going to ensure to all. Do you review the question Solicitor Zayer asked Commissioner Long before this meeting? Would you?
I had one question, trying to say, I believe one of the questions that you asked was, were these comments any specific to this development? Is that one of your questions? And the answer was no?
I believe it's correct. What the question answered?
Just to clarify, the first comment that I was read said that I get to prefer an old rundown motel, so we're not seeking, these comments, we're not, this project. The first comment, I guess, in C1 states, I get to prefer an old rundown motel. I'm just following on the previous question, which was, these comments were specific to this development. I believe Commissioner Long answered they were not. I just want to clarify that question, and the answer on this, it's a, I'm straight.
I, I miss this.
I just had to find these. We got a roll call on the table, Commissioner Long. The motion again is to deny the request for Commissioner Long to require him to recuse himself from the hearing today. Commissioner Long. Commissioner Sutton.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yes, because he's, he's not going to recuse.
Okay, so Commissioner Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton. Yes.
Without them having them taken care of, and Mr. Galloway has sworn in the applicant's witnesses, Chris Morgan, Attorney General.
Thank you, Attorney Sager, I'm thinking Dave Vanbar for that introduction. So at this point, I believe it is the opportunity now for the applicant to start with a presentation. Attorney Sager, is there any formal proceedings before they start?
I would just say, I mean, proceeding is as detailed as this one, if Mr. Preston was just making kind of brief opening, or a new statement, he's sort of, just to help Mr. Corcoran, the board, this is not to be at this time.
Welcome to the floor, it's yours.
Thank you, I agree, Commissioner, just remember the public, Mr. Corcoran. This is a conditional use hearing for a, a use that's been tried on the record, and it's been reviewed extensively by the township. And I think what you're going to find in the course of the hearing is that this particular application satisfies all requirements set forth in the ordinance. Popularity is not one of those requirements, but it does meet everything that is set forth in writing in the ordinance. We have next to me, Kevin Markle, he is our project engineer, who has tried to give the engineering aspects of a project, and immediately his last, except hero, he's the project architect. He will be speaking as an architecturalist of the project, and then we get to what I believe will probably be the main event, Mr. Hoffman, and he is our project engineer. I noticed that the, well, the planning commission voted to recommend against the application, and I believe that recommendation, which is contained in the letter of March 4, 2021, states that the planning commission recommended to the board of commissioners that the plan be denied, the plan did not actively address the requirements of Section 350, ATB1H. That's the reason given for the planning commission's denial. I think what you're going to find is that, that statement, well, you're going to find that it did that, it addressed that particular section, and that there was evidence on the record, to the planning commission at the time, when they made that recommendation, that it would in fact satisfy that. The problem is that this is the hearing, this is where the evidence is, this is, if you wanted, for want of a better term, for trial, this is where the whip decision called cross-examining, and the record is taken, the exhibits are submitted, and if there's an appeal, this is the record that goes to the court. That's not what's generally in front of the planning commission. The old call, witnesses swear, this is all a testimony. There was papers from our project engineer as to reasons for compliance with that section, and we'll get to those, into those a little bit later on, so, the answer is not for long of this anymore than it needs to be. I'm going to be moving to my first witness, when Mr. Sager is okay to do that.
Mr. Preston, please proceed. Kevin, call Kevin Markle as the first witness, or your applicant. That's it.
Yeah.
In the audience here.
That's it. Yeah. Okay, well, I'm getting affirmative, I see. Kevin, you've been sworn to that thread?
Correct.
Please let me inform you, so.
Kevin Markle.
Okay, and are you, oh, your employees, the professional engineer? Please, let me give you a document, where Tom Markle has exhibited one. You know, before I gave him the proper explanation, Mr. Sager talked about that called E10, which were the applicants' exhibits who submitted an immense, and E10 goes as a, as a single exhibit, so those were posted on the website. What I want to do here to see is, I'm going to use that same pattern. But I'm going to go through the documents individually, and I'm going to know that A1, A2, A3, et cetera, just for the purpose of the record. Whatever I'll talk, I'm going to believe, if you're going to see, believe we will see on the screen. So, Kevin.
Thank you.
This is talking here, can I get your name, I said?
Yes, sir.
And it is that, on the screen?
Yes, it is.
Then what is that?
My first line.
And is it accurate to date this here?
Yes, it is.
Does your work require you to design land development projects?
Yes, it does.
You designed those projects, and you're required to be familiar with the rules, regulations, and ordinances governing land development for the municipality, property, will it?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the project that's before the commissioners to see?
Yes, I am.
And will the evidence that you will be identifying in your testimony this evening be prepared by you or under your own?
Yes, sir.
Are you familiar with the South Whiteall Township ordinances as they relate to the project before the commissioners to see?
Yes, sir.
And I testify that I am a witness prior to the season?
Yes, sir.
I do testify that I am a witness in the area of land development design, including the application of governing ordinances to those designs.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to offer Mr. Markle as a first witness in the area of planning development design, which includes the application of governing ordinances to those designs. Respectfully suggest to the board, the seaters, and that, I'll say this once, don't say each time, but the standard for someone being accepted as a first witness is simply someone who has knowledge about a particular topic exceeds that of all. Mr. Markle, his credentials, professional engineer, he does seem to have a certain... Thank you. Now, Mr. Markle, have you prepared anything to show the subject property and its location within the South Whiteall Township?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to add that the fact that you mark this A2, I forgot to say on the record, I'd like that, C2, mark this A1. And now we're proceeding to exhibit A2. Okay, C2 is on the screen. Would you please describe the area, first of all, surrounding the subject property? Is that the subject property you're drawing?
Yes, the, the subject site is in the bottom left corner of the map on the screen. That would be, we're going to, that runs to the south of the site, that runs east-west, 309 runs north-south to the west of the site. Further to the east is Spruce House Road, further to the north is Paul Brown.
So it appears to be nestled into the intersection of 309 and Route 22, is that right?
Northwest side.
For somebody who's not, let's say, somebody who happens to be familiar with this road, what is Route 22? Anything that would be?
More lane than access.
And what about the 309?
Had access to it.
Nice to be a local there, it's a nice to be that great with the local.
Correct.
That would be different. Now, what about the used, the area around the property you've been talking about?
Sure. It is around, uh, the east, it's residential, permanent, there are some, or could use this, meaning the order of all, all drive. Obviously, some, yeah, for, actually, this is the thing opposite side of 309 as well.
Now, let's, hold on a second. Let's, I think, prepare to exhibit, it would help us understand what the board, the commissioners understand, what exists in use of projects. And how many of that do more of this A3?
I'm bringing that.
Is that the correct?
It did.
That's correct. Okay, would you explain to the commissioners what is being proposed? Would you explain to the commissioners, with reference to the A3, what is being proposed?
Uh, A3 is the existing survey plan. Uh, this shows the existing conditions of the site. Site has a existing hotel, which consists of five separate buildings, an existing maintenance building, and an existing residential dwelling on the property. The hotel needs 285 rooms, a hall with 1,200 person capacity, a restaurant of 200 person capacity, and five meetings with a total capacity of 160 persons.
And what zone district is the property located in?
The HD Highway Commercial.
And this area is going over the district that's relevant to this proposed use?
Yes, the TNT commercial retrofit over the district.
And, Attorney Sager, if you spoke about this, it's open as to be something that the property owner can opt into. I assume that this applicant has opted into the TNT over it?
That's correct.
The, you said before the commissioners this evening, is this just committed a conditional use in this open district?
Yes.
Now, have you prepared any data identifying, uh, the, what we're proposing for the subject property?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to add that the more of this A4, and why don't you just take a minute or more if you need, and tell us what is being proposed?
The proposal, my emphasis, of 35 townhomes, 25 of which are against our front Cracker Court Road. There's another set of 10 townhomes that are along either side of the entrance directly opposite Winchester Road. The project also consists of six mixed-use buildings of average size. Each of the mixed-use buildings will be four stories, will have commercial and parking garages on the ground floor. The top three floors will have apartments, a total of 360 apartments. The project will be accessed from Bulldog Drive, as well as a new intersection directly opposite Winchester Drive. Will be a total of 17 parking spaces combined between the surface lots and the internal garage spaces. An additional six large parking spaces for large vehicles, plus four spaces for electric vehicles and trucks. The project is proposing 20, approximately 25% of open space, which exceeds the required 15% set by the ordinance. Project is also proposing approximately 7% of active open space, which exceeds the required 5% by the ordinance. The project will be required to comply with the township and county's formal management regulations. We propose a combination of underground detention systems, filtration systems, spray irrigation, and, and suspected thunder BMEs to meet the water quality, volume, and peak rate requirements of the ordinance. The project is compliant with the township's zoning ordinance, don't need any other zoning variances. We will be requesting one way to go from subdivision land development ordinance to get to land development, which repays to the roadway and Cracker Court Road. The ordinance requires a 40-foot carway. Current road is 36 feet, so we'll be requesting a way to not line the grade by an additional two feet, other than complying with the subdivision land development.
So Mr. Markle, I think, then that the use case, I think, with the board, I'm starting to put the commissioners this evening. As you say, it doesn't require any areas of zoning ordinance? Is that correct?
That's correct.
In, in a rocky kind of conclusion, yes, sir, has this plan been reviewed by township staff?
Yes, sir.
And who are some individuals that may have reviewed, I think, in terms of zoning, all circle or township managers?
Yes, township staff have reviewed it, township's only officer has reviewed it, and township's chairman reviewed it.
And you, they confirm you don't need any ordinance, is that correct?
That's correct.
They confirm that the plan does not require any ordinance. And we, yes, sir, that's correct. Now, does a body such as district require, or do the ordinance access to, called water and sewer?
Yes, it does.
Let's move, let's move to the next exhibit. Which I'm going to more, this is A5, I think, right, A5. Kevin, I put up A5. It's a letter to you, it's from Jason Newhart, I'm going to state that for purposes of identification, however, I'm going to give you an opportunity to explain then what his signature says.
Yes, this is a letter from the township water and sewer engineer, confirming the willingness of the township to serve the project's site with water and sewer services when we go to land develop.
So that letter does in fact confirm that it's a public water and sewer facility, is that right?
Correct.
Now, in addition to the proposed conditional use that's before the commissioners to see, do you consider uses other than this conditional use of this property?
Yes, it did.
And did you consider any, I'm going to use the word, by right uses for this property?
Yes, it did.
What do you take the phrase by right to mean?
A permitted use in the highway and commercial district.
Hey, I want to talk about some of those to go by rights. Uh, let's begin with sort of exhibit A6, Markle's A6. Mr. Markle, up on the screen is exhibited A6, are you familiar with that?
Yes, sir.
And is the use of A6, if maybe called by right use under the law?
Yes, it is.
Hey, if you take a minute, please, describe the use, with reference in particular to, you know, zoning requirements.
This use depicts a combination of the medical office space and a daycare, approximately 184,000 square feet of medical office space, 8,000 square feet of daycare. The project layout provides for additional future development. The project will meet the parking requirements, and also reduces impervious coverage, and as well below the township threshold to set up the guidance, allow, this plan proposes only 40% impervious coverage.
So then, is your opinion that the use shown in exhibit A6 is a by right use complying with the South Whiteall Township zoning ordinance without the need for zoning relief?
Correct.
Do you know if the traffic analysis was performed for the use shown on exhibit A6?
Yes, it was. It's all.
So you didn't analyze the traffic impacts for the use shown on exhibit A6?
No, I didn't.
But you know it?
Correct.
And I will represent for the commissioners and for the audience, that the person who's responsible for the traffic, so he's here, he's in the lineup, he will be testifying, I suspect that's going to be of significant interest, so, uh, if you want to reserve this question for Mr. Markle, he'll be coming up, I believe, in appreciation, this gentleman did not appear at the conference. Okay, Kevin. Let's turn to exhibit A7, next up. Hey, now, what does exhibit A7 show?
This is another alternate development plan for permitted uses in the highway and commercial district, which consists of two extended stay hotels, a fast food restaurant, retail space, and a bank. There is future development area available on the site. And the plan would meet all parking requirements setbacks, also reduces impervious coverage over the existing. Uh, this project proposes only 50% impervious coverage, well below the threshold of 75%.
If your opinion that the use shown on exhibit A6 is a by right use complying with the South Whiteall Township zoning ordinance without the need for zoning relief?
Yes.
Do you know if a traffic analysis was performed for the use shown on exhibit A6?
Yes, it was.
I'm sorry, Kevin. Okay, A7. And usually perform that analysis?
Hell, I'm not.
The same gentleman as before performed that analysis?
That's correct.
Let's turn to exhibit A8, please. Kevin, would you describe, to the record, what does exhibit A8?
Exhibit A8 depicts a third alternate development, which consists of permitted uses such as a shopping center, fast food restaurant, general office building, and a bank. The plan proposes 53% impervious coverage, would meet parking requirements, and does have space available for future development.
Is your opinion that the use shown in exhibit A8 is a by right use complying with South Whiteall Township zoning ordinance without the need of zoning relief?
Yes.
And do you know if traffic analysis was performed for the use shown on exhibit A8?
Yes, it was.
But not by you?
Correct.
And again, Mr. Hoffman, who's our traffic manager, confirmed to the board, will be testifying, okay, to the court. Now, finally, I'm going to turn to exhibit A9. What does exhibit A9?
A9, A9 shows another alternate of permitted uses consisting of extended stay hotel, a sit-down restaurant, retail space, annual office space, and the bank. Plan would propose all parking, and impervious coverage would be approximately 49%. And there are still future development areas.
I mean, you said that several times, you said, for each, like, we go through future development areas still. What, what did you mean by that?
The plan is not maxed out, it's a very scary, there's still space on the site, potentially another additional use.
So each of the plans can testify that they're not, as I will say, aggressive as they did?
Correct.
Okay. Now, is your opinion that the use shown in exhibit A9 is by right use complying with the South Whiteall Township zoning ordinance without the need for zoning?
Yes.
And you know if traffic analysis was performed for the use shown on exhibit A9?
Yes, it was.
But you did not perform that traffic analysis that referred?
That's correct.
Now, going back to, some of the requirements for conditional uses. Now, going back to some of the requirements for conditional uses, it's my understanding that we do have the burden of both production and proof with respect to the objective or specific criteria that some times call. I don't believe we have that with respect to the non-specific criteria, however and nevertheless, and without reading my claim that the burden is non-our, I still want to talk to the commissioners to be helpful or useful, for the commissioners and for the audience that go through the triennial proposal, okay? And so I'll specifically talk on that section, zoning section, three fifty eighteen, sub B, which talks about approval of additional uses, and it listed some criteria, and I'm going to read those out at the moment and issue your opinion on those, as to whether or not we believe the application, are you satisfied with your criteria, okay? A, the zoning characteristics maintenance and operation of the use are such that public health, safety, and general welfare will be protected and reasonable consideration. Two, among the things, the character, suitability of the location in question and the zoning district, traffic safety and road capacity, conservation of property matters, preservation of the nature, equality of property, would you speak to that?
The application is consistent, defer comments on traffic, that's a least of traffic, so that's analysis.
Do you, but you believe other than opinion conveyed to traffic safety and road capacity, that the application needs to balance that?
Correct.
B says that the application be consistent with the community development objectives articulated in the zoning ordinance, correct, according to section six oh six of the municipal planning of the post-mentally comment on that.
I believe it is.
C says that the application be consistent with the statement of purpose articulated for the district in which the use is proposed and promotes the harmonious and orderly development of such zoning district, would you comment on that?
I believe it is.
E says that the use be consistent with South White County comprehensive plan and official map, would you comment on that?
I believe it is.
Have you commented on that?
Yes, I did.
E says that the matter was that the use be compatible with the character or type of development exhibited in the area that surrounds the site and permitted in the underlying zoning district, in terms of size, scale, height, and bulk of proposed uses, and the size, shape, and placement of buildings and other structures, would you comment on that?
I believe it is.
F says that the use be compatible with the uses permitted in the surrounding area and permitted in the underlying zoning district, in terms of density and/or intensity of land use, would you comment on that?
I believe it is.
G says that the use be reflective of sound engineering, land development design, and structural principles, practices, and that it means that we will apply it to land and ground process. H says that it will provide for safe and efficient access to roads, traffic congestion, traffic conditions, and receptive traffic models, would you speak to that?
I believe it is.
They're too close to each other. They're too close to each other, those lights. So we're down to H, and in fact, this is the particular section, I believe, that the board of commissioners referred to in the rap, I know, and you have the evidence to find that.
I believe we're applying all specific comments to our traffic consultants who prepared the analysis.
The next one says that the use will provide continuity in existing circulation systems, including roads, side walls, and trails, would you speak to that, please?
I believe we apply all of that.
J says that the use will provide for adequate environmental controls and performance standards to minimize noise, vibration, glare, heat, odor, smoke, dust, fumes, vapors, gases, air emissions, water emissions, and outdoor storage. Speak to that, please.
The project will apply all the environmental standards.
Of course, there's a requirement that the condition used here to minimum standards specified for the potential use by applicable regulations of sorts, because I think you may testify that, you don't need to agree, but you know, in your words.
I believe we are applying.
Finally, it says that the use must be all of the specific standards for the proposed use listed in sections three fifty dash thirty or three fifty dash within, your opinion would you repeat that?
I believe we apply all of the requirements.
No further questions? Procedure, we're going to use, and the board of commissioners, I don't know, asked questions of the witness, after having confirmed to the corporate, he's going to wait until all the applicants witnesses give a testimony, he'll ask his question.
Thank you, gentlemen. So if this point is open enough to the board of commissioners, if any questions regarding that presentation?
Good evening. Mr. Merkel?
Correct.
Could you please elaborate on reasons why you believe the application is compliant with payment code? Compatible with the character or type of development existing in the area that surrounds the site and permitted in the underlying zoning district, in terms of size, scale, height, and bulk of the proposed uses, and the size, shape, and placement of the buildings and other structures.
Certainly, the township has, does have the D and D overlay district, which has standards for densities, purpose coverages, security requirements. The project has proposed complying with all of those standards, for instance, just to cite a couple, briefly, the open space requirements, we're seeing both the open space and active open space requirements. There's a requirement for the maximum allowable area above commercial uses, which would consist of these six mixed-use buildings. That maximum area is seventy-five percent, the project is only proposing sixty-three percent. E, there's a requirement in the D and D district that the area of residential use must be ten percent minimum or twenty-five percent maximum. That use consists of the area where the proposed residential units are, which consists of the townhomes, this allocation, are provided as a closing eleven point seven percent, so within the standards of the ordinance. Residential density requirements are fifteen years per acre requirement, maximum requirement, we're proposing twelve point six years to create. There's a requirement for the height of the mixed-use buildings to be up to sixty feet if they are more than three hundred feet from any lotline belonging to residential district or residential use, and they're adjacent to a electric street. Concracker Ford Road is a electric street, and on the project, we propose buildings that are minimum three hundred to seven feet away from the adjacent residential lotlines. There's a requirement that the central plaza or close is required to be fifteen thousand square foot minimum, based on this property size, we're proposing the central plaza or close, that is nineteen thousand square. So I believe you demonstrate all the requirements of the ordinance.
Thank you for your answer, that was quite extensive. Let me come back and just focus in on one particular part of the plan. He speaks about the compatibility with the character or type of development existing in the area that surrounds the site regarding its size and scale. One thing that the surrounding neighborhood is some are for residential.
Correct, it is, it is some. The D and D overlay district consent the regulations for this, knowing the adjoining zoning district and right-hand developments, so they're complying with the ordinance requirements. You cannot create the D and D overlay requirements complying with the standards.
Oh, okay, so I'll close with this question. You do recognize that item E is an ordinance required? I, I'm simply, you know, if you ask, do you recognize that item E is one of the zoning requirements? Obviously.
Thank you, President.
I just, I'm a little confused, I thought this was interesting, that there would be no witnesses to the admirer cases and all the evidence that's involved, and it puts us in, it's a little unusual, I'm going to put us in the awful position, and keep babies, keep them come back every night, I'm not sure why, could have do this across on the standard course.
Before you do so, those are some of the board questions, however.
Yes, please.
I, I probably, I didn't do that one, right, I wouldn't have quite understood, you may not, yes, some questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions to the board?
I have one question. You made reference to seeking a waiver for Concracker Ford Road, which forty-foot carway is required for this, and your request would be for thirty-six-foot carway. Can you elaborate why not lining the road with nearly four hundred units of proposed, why would that be an argument you would come up with or ask for?
The, the existing carway of thirty-six feet exists today, there's a, that's the existence of the crack of the road, all the way to Springhouse Road, why even an extra two feet on our side won't add capacity to the roadway, that's a bit more, bit more than anything in terms of traffic capacity or anything like that, and initiate a chance for people to walk along the road or enter a seat, so we're just looking to request a waiver to keep the road as is, that it has function.
And I do want to point out, again, for the, we're not asking for that waiver to see, and I think anyone here, that that's a legal issue, purpose, I think that the witness should just be completely accurate in his answer as to what we leave there and all, to play those two without that, but that comes with the, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question, so, it's, it's to understand the perspective of the subject. So you, you explained the, the existing, so, yeah, how many rooms were in the hotel, the ballroom capacity, and then you went through the proposed plan, and I tried to write all that down, of course, didn't get everything, I'm sure, but just trying to understand, is the existing development, that's there in that amount, from capacity standpoint, from, from people, I'm not talking traffic, from parking and all that, is that more or less than what you're proposing?
I'm not quite sure.
So you, you mentioned that the hotel, the existing hotel, I believe you said there's two hundred eighty-five rooms, there's a ballroom with a twelve-hundred-person capacity, a restaurant with a two-hundred-person capacity, and five community rooms, we're just trying to catch that capacity, I think seven hundred and sixty people total. So adding up, adding up the amount of people as far as capacity or people, I'm trying to kind of look at that again, I guess that's my question.
I think it would be powerful to not recommend anything proposed with the number of apartments and households.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Charles, I just have one, a very quick couple of things, a very quick couple of things, you had mentioned there's thirty-five townhomes listed facing crack of the road, and facing, what did you say? Twenty-five, ten, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. These townhomes, for sale, or anyway, wanted to be rentous, they allow a percent, they don't be rentous. Correct. And you also had mentioned, also mentioned that the garage, going to be on the first floor of the buildings, where, how is that going to be, compared to the different properties? If you go back to the exhibit before, presented earlier, it's going to be a little difficult to see, but on that plan, and you can see each of the mixed-use buildings, the locations on the first floor, where some of the garage space would be, the remaining space on the first floor is where you would have some of the commercial space, such as the daycare, a back office space, a retail space, a restaurant space. So the garage is in the commercial aspect of it, will share the first graph, or did we, so, presented.
Those are great. Just a quick question, in following up on what you said, regarding the units themselves, was there any consideration to, or what was the consideration, this is a better question, why was all around properties as opposed to owner-occupied?
I presume can, can't own, first, the owner.
And then my second question is following up on what Mr. Morgan, regarding current land usage, do you have any idea in terms of the actual, I guess, the property cell, if it's being underutilized or utilized to full capacity, and if not, what would be the average current usage of property?
From an purpose coverage perspective, it is not an excellent, excellent coverage that exists, the site is approximately fifty-eight percent compared to seventy-five percent allowed by ordinance, so that aspect is, would help, and that could take place on the same.
Any other question from the board?
Given the proposal, what percent of the purpose services are really in that area?
For proposed?
Yes.
Approximately sixty-two percent. So we have a slight increase in purpose, but what's there today?
And by purpose, what is the next one you're about to?
Seventy-five percent.
Thank you. And one other question, on the commercial development on the first floor, what percentage of that commercial area is part?
what percentage of that commercial area is parking, and what percentage of the other in retail and the rental offices, as you said?
I think it's slightly less than half, it's a little slightly less than fifty percent of the garage space versus, slightly more to garage space on the first floor than to the base, office space, and those other uses on the ground.
So over fifty percent of the commercial space is going to be the garage?
Fifty, over fifty percent of the first round floor of all the buildings.
Correct.
Dedicated to garage space versus.
And those would be heavy parking spaces or even spaces where people live and sit down and sit car for days?
They would be for all the parking spaces.
For the commercial, not for the rest?
Okay. Any other questions? Trying to say.
Speaking of more questions, the board, I'll just go to corporate. With, with regarding questions, I can, I can wait until the commissioners start, and I don't think your answer was responsive. Through that whole list of lines, section E, that's three fifty dash eighteen E, compatible with the character and type of development and framework existing in the surrounding area, not a different client, would it be different ordinance? Would it be fair to say that all the houses, the surrounding area theater is basically all the single-family homes? On the map, it showed all houses as far as I can see, a couple, one or two commercial things, sort of ninety-eight percent of single-family homes. They say a lot of percentages, right there. And all those houses, when I go through, March's houses, two-story home, a lot of them are one-story, correct?
I have not forgotten the neighborhood, I just, I forgot.
They have the little family house, have the other one. Well, then you know there were only one or two-story homes, such as C and three or four-story ones, no, no, you didn't. With regard to the fall, these houses are all detached, single-family homes, all the ones you saw drive, the third bag.
Correct.
And these are detached. Would, if you find out that the homes in the surrounding area are on rentals, at rentals, or are they basically almost one hundred percent single-family homes owned by the owner? Didn't check. Then how would you be able to say it's compatible, would it be to check what the area was?
Does the township need this, this use as part of the overlay district, and if we're likely, that's the overlay district, but we're talking about this section now, on a conditional use, not an overlay. This is a conditional use. Section F of that same three fifty dash eighteen, it again says compatible with the uses permitted in the surrounding area. Now, that keywords are uses permitted in the surround, they're all single-family homes permitted at that. So none of these are compatible with the uses permitted in the surrounding area. They're all permitted, I understand your little thing here on this issue, but none of the, are uses permitted in the surrounding area, which is a different zoning district, but right-hand, correct? That's right, they're a different zoning district. But this says compatible uses permitted in the surrounding area. It doesn't say in the same zoning district, it says surrounding area, correct? That's E, or excuse me, F. Yes, that's what that says, okay. And I believe with one of the other questions that one of the commissioners said, an ask to explain the, the current usage of the site as far as density, all that usage never, this property never required, because this hotel was there for years, and they didn't sit on the Winchester Road, did it? Did land design, you know? Oh, you didn't see that, did you? On the Winchester Road, did you? No, not ever, say, was that requested, or why from the sign? But for the usage, there is only one exit from this hotel, it's on the pool, correct?
Correct.
That's all, I guess, to the seat, this is function for all. But your development can't just say it's on the pool, correct? Promoting certain items on that one. But you appear to say it would not just one-on-one pool, all defer to a safe area, I'm trying to try and, I'm trying to make that better.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Mr. President, I'd like to give you a comment in a few minutes back. Do I understand you can say that the preference would be, after any audience questions that Mr. Merkel raised now, so Mr. Merkel may not have that back?
I may, if this is understood, you may, of why you want that. We, we, we already, I think we'll be here in each chamber now. I have a question. I, I just have one, uh, question. Do you think that for, for to be compatible with single-family or rental by home, there must be another single-family or rental?
No, that's all I have.
Next one is? What do you call Seth Shapiro? Seth, if you can just move his hand, please identify yourself.
Can you hear me with this?
Keep talking. Keep talking.
Yes, my name is Seth Shapiro, personal director of planning and urban design, or called partner, partner, fire text planner, seek, we're located in our sound, let's say.
Just give us a minute, switch chairs, make a change, please. Good? Okay, now, on the screen is a document from the AS, that is, the more test exhibit in ten. First of all, you recognize?
Yes, that is my resume.
And is it accurate as of date of the year?
It is.
And I've identified an expert prior to speaking about architectural zoning law.
I have.
But also, Mr. Shapiro has an expert in the area of architecture. So, Mr. Corcoran, any objection?
Oh, no, none.
Okay. For the same reason that I took the board over, Mr. Merkel, I will disqualify, because she can't mention these things, I certainly feel. Okay, Mr. Shapiro, are you familiar with the project that is for the commissioners to see?
Yes, I am.
And does that Whitehall County zoning ordinance impose any architectural or design requirements on this proposed project?
Yes, it does. It's part of the overlay requirements. One of the, one of the requirements is to produce a, a general manual of written graphic design standards for the project based on the density in the South Whitehall County's ordinance.
Does that Whitehall County engage its own expert to review these proposed design guidelines?
Yes, it does.
And who is that?
That is Tom Comettin.
And if you work with Tom Comettin and, and work with you to design that?
Yes, we have.
Now, the exhibit we're about to produce, exhibit, I believe, which is the, the open of design guidelines, was, was this exhibit prepared by you or by your director?
Yes, my director.
And, and what exactly is the technical name of it, more formally?
The formal name is general manual of written and graphic design standards.
And up on the screen now is the cover for that manual. I'm going to ask if that be marked as exhibit eleven, and I'm going to ask you first of all, to tell us what goes on in the manual for design guidelines.
So the point of the manual design guidelines is to sort of, be a little bit more specific at the land development stage, really prior to the land development stage, of what the project may look like or feel like from a placemaking standpoint. It takes, it has some technical standards, it's land state design standards, it's saying to what kind of streets, parks, and open spaces, and even what goes on in the spaces within, within a project.
And what is the status of this design by my manual, where are?
We are good with the manual.
And is the, your professional opinion is designed by my manual for this project, it's just been developed in coordination with Mr. Comettin, is it responsive to the ordinance required?
It is.
Now, I want to ask you some other questions that I really hadn't planned on this, and you see, my security person, this expertise, probably addresses. There was a question earlier that existed at the end of year, discerning some of the general criteria and the ordinance for cool of conditional use. In particular, he, it was referenced to a section E, it's putting a red in it. The use must be compatible with the character and type of development existing in the area that surrounds the site and permitted in the underlying zoning district. In terms of size, scale, height, and proposed uses, and size shape, and placement of buildings, and other structure, did you do the comment? Back and forth comment?
I do.
Would you be happy to have a comment on that?
Yeah, I do. So actually, the ordinance itself, when the overlay ordinance itself actually strengthens pretty well, with its height differential standards, it allows thirty-five feet in height, and further back if you get from single-family residential, it goes up to sixty feet in height. The idea here is that, that is what the plan does. You start with single-family homes, single-family neighborhood on one side of Cracker Sport Road. Then on the other side of Cracker Sport Road, right now, we have this commercial house. But what the, what the ordinance is to kind of do is sort of create a transect from single-family to that heavily commercial, that's limited by the, the height. So it provides sort of this, this sort of rise in intensity away from the single-family towards the height of the commercial, which happens to the name of the underlying zoning district. So there's, there's really that, and I have to buffer. That's why we have those townhomes lining Cracker Sport Road, and it's just three stories, and they're townhouses, so they're sort of one step up from a single-family attached house. Then we have just three hundred feet until you get to the, the mall family homes, which are four stories, as actually permitting on my, right now.
So as a professional architect, do you believe that the proposal that the, the commissioners see applies with part eight?
I do.
And since part F was mentioned, I'm going to read that as well. The use is compatible with the uses permitted in the surrounding area and permitted in the underlying zoning district, in terms of density and protecting, and you should speak to that.
Well, sure, the primary use here is residential, the single-family homes across the street are essential, this is primarily residential use. It does have an expert requirement of ordinance, commercial ground floors to create more of a space environment, and create a little bit more retention, for example, but it is not a residential use.
No, you're right. Does any member of the board commissioners have a question for this witness?
Can I get the board members to have any questions? No questions.
No questions, board, Mr. Corcoran.
My question is, is the design that we did, is it fair to say that basically everything's going to be a red?
Yes, it is, red, green, blue.
The whole, all the businesses obviously aren't going to, they're all, they'll be a red for all the persons, correct?
Correct.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Nobody said that, I have this to solve, so sorry. So just to confirm, everything is a red?
Red.
Thank you.
Mr. President, follow? None, okay. Free to call, Aaron's witness. Here we go, Mr. Hoffman. Can I, well, Hoffman, here's my name, witness, Rob, would you please identify yourselves?
Yes, Rob Hoffman, with traffic planning design.
And would you please describe your point of traffic planning design?
Sure, I'm a regional manager of traffic planning design, located seventeen-twenty Silk Drive, Bethany. I've got twenty-five years' experience exclusively in transportation, engineering, and design, a licensed professional engineer, and it's mainly, I'm certified as a professional traffic operations engineer, and I've been accepted as an expert, actually before this board in the past.
On the screen is something on the AS, the more test exhibit twelve, you recognize?
I think it's my career, I think.
And is that accurate as of date of the year?
It is.
You are, I think, PTOA, if you're name, I take that to be a professional traffic operations engineer, is that correct?
That's right.
And in order to become a professional traffic operations engineer, one must first be a professional engineer?
That's right.
I've already posted, you tested file before this board, I informed this commission, and I welcome Mr. Hoffman as an expert in the area of traffic operations, traffic design. Mr. Corcoran, any questions or objections? And I'll say to the board, for same reasons we discussed in the past, based on the job and credentials, it can be considered expert in traffic engineering. Thank you. So, Mr. Hoffman, you've already heard your work, your analysis of traffic impact generated by various land development projects?
Yes, I did.
And when analyzing the impact, you require to be familiar with the rules, regulations, and ordinances governing land development for the municipality in which such projects were created?
Yes, I did.
Are you familiar with the South Whitehall County rules and regulations covering traffic?
I am.
Does the ordinance, as the zoning ordinance, like, we require traffic study for this project?
Yes, it does.
And is it typical for you to do, first of all, what's with the traffic study now?
Yes.
And it's typical for you to do such a traffic study in cooperation with the municipal engine?
Yes, it is.
Who is the municipal engineer for South Whitehall County?
The Pittycott Company.
And the Pittycott Company committed all in your preparation of the traffic study for this project?
Yes, with respect to the scoping of the traffic study initially, the board was informed, there was a combination, through myself and my office, with representatives from the Pittycott Company, that outlined the parameters to include in the traffic.
Now, the, the traffic impact study, I like to make that part of the record. You have that? Nothing on the stomach, you have your study itself? Oh, we don't have that, we don't have it, but to, for the record, I would like to have the traffic study in South Marcus Day thirteen, and incorporate it into the record, I believe it's already there. Mr. Sater is part of an official offer.
It is, it's part of his, of B-Town.
Yes. So I would like to have that mark to say 13 for the purposes of discussion. And then, Mr. Hallman, given the amount of information, approximately 100 pages is the track.
Probably about 400.
Now, given the amount of information obtained in such a detailed study, is it typical to summarize that information in something called an executive summary?
Yes, it is.
Take a look at the screen, I'm going to ask, I'm going to do this for, to prepare the executive summary for this project based on the traffic.
Yes, it's included in the act of traffic.
Take a look at the screen on the A, that can mark as the document given in mark to say 14, you're writing on that?
I did, it's included in the act of traffic.
So based on the executive summary, or whatever information you think is convenient or necessary, will you take a minute now to describe the findings brought into the traffic impact for the project as being proposed here to you?
Sure. I'm looking at every one of this, and then executive summary, and he says, we'll walk through. That's discussion, this scope of study was, was discussed, and I included the township engineer prior to the next study was agreed upon. So the track study looked at various intersections in the area, project area, including intersections of Route 309, Ridge Drive, Ridge Drive, Bulldog Drive, Ridge Drive, Waldron Avenue, Bulldog Drive and Crackers Port Road, Crackers Port Road and Winchester Road, Crackers Port Road and Spring House Road, and Spring House Road and Winchester Road. Again, that was, that was the, the study area was culminated upon, based on discussions with the township engineers, agreed upon that it was the overall study area for this project. As discussed previously, the project is a mixed-use development with a mix of residential types of units, as well as commercial units, or commercial development ground, and any other facility. Accesses proposed to be a two-full access driveway, one in Crackers Port Road, and one in Winchester Road, and then the other utilized to Bulldog Drive after Crackers Port. With respect to the new site access, I think it was found that both of those access locations, under the proposed conditions with the development, post-development of the site, those intersections would operate at an overall intersection level surface A. With respect to the surface of intersections, that's a, it's a rating tool that's used to determine how those intersections perform and operate. And the rating system is how it used to be graded in schools, by A through an A, where A is good, and an A is not so good. So again, those intersection would operate at an overall level surface A for those site locations sufficiently. One of the key items that needs to be looked at with respect to any site access and site distance, site distance was evaluated at those locations, and bound to meet the applicable criteria with respect to enough safe stopping site distance requirements. As far as the traffic generation associated with the proposed development, the peak periods during the morning, it's anticipated to generate 330 trips. And during the afternoon or PM peak period, 333 new vehicle trips. With respect to the off-site intersections that were discussed, those were evaluated, and all of those intersections were found to operate at an overall level surface D or better during the projected conditions with the development of the site. The one caveat to that is the intersection of 309 and Ridge Drive, where that intersection operated at a level surface E. With respect to all site improvements, one of the things that we looked at was at the intersection of Spring House Road and Crackers Port Road. As part of the discussion of the township engineer, we were asked to look at that for consideration as an all-way stop condition. It's currently considered two-way stop, Crackers Port Road stop control, Spring House Road, to have the right of way for free travel. One of the things that we looked at, about even at intersection, an all-way stop, where all approaches would be stopped. We looked at that from the perspective of the vehicular volume ones, the amount of vehicles traveling through the intersection, the certain criteria that's required in order to warrant that all-way stop condition. We found that the volume ones were not there to meet the all-way stop condition. However, one of the other things you should look at is if there is a site line restriction that could be improved or made safer by the installation of an always-stop condition. And what we found is the looking right from Crackers Port Road is somewhat impeded by the twenty-two overpass structure. And the site lines were limited in that direction. So that would be, that could be used as a tool, if you will, for implementation in always-stop. So we made a recommendation that something that the township and the township engineer may want to consider creating an always-stopping intersection.
Now, let me add to this question, this is a pretty important question. The traffic impacts generated by this project, are they at all unusual for a project of the same nature?
My opinion is so.
Would you agree that the traffic impacts generated by the project are typical for a project such as this?
I believe that the impacts from the track associated with the site is typical for something that you would see for example, a similar project to what's been proposed here, some of these are still being proposed here.
Now, when Ken was testifying earlier, talked about some of the general criteria and ordinance, and he represented that we would have some here, talk about traffic, whether the usual create traffic congestion, how the traffic conditions, assess the traffic volume, so forth. Some of you will, we will, we will come in and talk about that.
Sure. I stated, yes. Section A states that you should provide safe, efficient access to the roads and not create traffic congestion. As testified earlier, the access, the access locations of the road have not operated at a level surface A. Don't get a better level service than that. Have the traffic, which has been excessive traffic volume, shall not be created. Again, this, this may lead into something like slide, that you may get to. As far as excessive traffic volumes, what's being proposed is actually a lower traffic generator than other uses that violate uses that could be put on the site. So again, it regards to nothing uncharacteristic from the traffic flow or generation perspective with what's being proposed here, relative to other uses.
Well, Mr. Hallman, with a follow-up, that way, took to be said later. You were here earlier when Devin testified about, I believe there were four different violates. Plan man on the plan of the site, do you remember that? Are you familiar with those plans?
Yes, I am.
You were asked to look at the traffic impact generated by each of those four planes, were you done?
Yes, I was.
So at this time, I'm going to enter two documents. I'm going to show you the, I will authenticate them. First one, I'm going to ask if you mark it as exhibit A15. What's the title of that?
Trip, or a barrier to summer.
And did you prepare that?
Yes, I did.
The second document, if you want to just jump ahead one slide. I'm going to have it marked as A16. Are you familiar with that document?
Yes, I am.
And what, how's that titled?
That's titled, Zodi, Zodi Alternatives Analysis of Service to the Summer.
And did you prepare that document?
Yes, I did.
Before we get to your conclusions, let's jump back to A15 and explain the reasoning of the rationale and methodology you used in developing exhibit A16.
So the, the second one, which is not the one that's up there, the exhibit A15 is based on capacity analysis that was done, and so.
Can I just start from one second?
We cannot see that screen. Could you tell us what page in the page this information is located?
It's like this.
I wonder if there's another one on the table.
So it should be in your pack, you have everything tagged into this? Do you have it tagged into this, your packet?
Thank you, sorry for the interruption.
Okay, so I think the question was, is what was the methodology used for the development of exhibit A15, which is on the screen. Before you, it's trip generation, and what that is, is it's a summary of anticipated traffic generation for the proposed development, as well as various options or alternatives that could be developed on the site. And that was completed utilizing the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Manual, which is basically the latter better term, or more or less the model as far as how for generation, traffic engineers develop for generations. It's the industry standard methodology for contemplating traffic generation associated with uses, based on actual studies that are included.
Brock, just set the table for my record. I see that there are four options out here, one, two, three, and four. Each one, so for example, often once this medical office is going to take care. I'm assuming that each of these options match the use that our engineer testified to as by right plans under zoning, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So to walk through this chart.
If you want to expand.
Okay, so let's, all right. Okay, so on this chart, Trifin, Trifin Richard's summary, across the top here, you can see proposed development. And there's, there's three columns, AM peak, so that's the, that's the peak hour in the morning. PM peak, the peak hour in the afternoon. And then the daily column, which is the over the course of the entire day. And what these numbers are, are the total trips that would be generated by the proposed development. So the morning, 374 trips. The evening, 379 trips, over the course of the day, 3,540 trips. So that's the developments being proposed. Now, when you go to the various, the various options here, I'm looking at a bit of a line, which you can see they're broken up by what well is discussed earlier on this plane. So it's medical office, daycare, restaurants, free delivery, so under option one, there's a little chunk in the total, because the units were totaled and, well. You can see that, that might play in, which ended with 469 in the morning versus the proposed 374. 700 in the evening versus 379 as proposed. And 7300 over the course of the day versus the 35, over 3,500 as proposed. Similarly, option two would result in 444 trips in the morning versus the 374 in the morning. 629 in the afternoon versus 379 as proposed. And a little over 6,800 over the course of the day compared to 35. Going to option three, 420 in the morning, 696 in the afternoon, 7,300 over the course of the day. Option four, 465 in the morning, 725 in the afternoon, and almost 7,500 over the course of the day. So basically, you can see that these four by right options would result in many cases in significantly higher performance than what's actually being proposed on the use, and that was all by right assistance, that they go on, that's right.
Now, for the purpose of the done my record, I'm going to ask you, but basically, you want to get any question? I can only ask you four questions. But for the record, I need to have an opinion on these. How would we, how did the fact that it's generated by the options proposed here? If there were the impact generated by option number one, which is medical office building in daycare. Talking about terms of, the ordinance provides something about congestion, has it so seconded? Okay, you can be connected to the orders.
Sure, okay. Again, the, the option. Sure, so again, you'll be, those options that are there, the, the traffic limits. Hot, so option one, again, 469 trips in the morning versus 374 trips proposed. 799 in the evening versus 379 for the proposed development. And 7,300 trips versus 3,500 trips over the course of the day. So clearly, that's significantly higher lighting traffic, which would have a much more severe impact on the roadway surrounding development, as well as even just the access to the net of the proposed site. Similarly, option two, 444 trips in the morning versus the 374 proposed, 629 in the afternoon versus the 379 proposed development, and 6,800 compared to 3,500. Basically, the same gateway, as long as you see it getting higher than what's being proposed, and it would happen in one, that, in a, on a certain period. And we got from three, the same story, 420 in the morning versus 374 proposed. 696 in the afternoon versus 379 in the afternoon proposed, and 7,300 trips over the course of the day compared to 3,500 trips under the proposed development. And those traffic volumes would have to get to much more. And those traffic volumes would have a much more severe impact on the surrounding roadway network in the area. And option four, again, 465 in the morning compared to 374 being proposed. 25 trips in the PM versus the 379 under the proposed scenario. And the 7,500 trips over the course of the day compared to the 3,500 trips under the proposed scenario, as long as we have a much more severe impact on the surrounding roadway.
So in addition to the state, if the condition used being under new, you'd see it generates fewer adverse effects. Then at least for the state, uses permitted by right, such as the property that appears. Start the track. Let me take a look. This here, we have one other exhibit, we just take a few minutes.
Okay, this is the level service summary that we looked at. Again, what we did here, it is we showed comparison at what I call one, you know, one critical intersection, which is the 309 intersection. And it looks at, again, you see the the morning peak, and then it's going to be for the various options, is on the left side of this chart. And then the afternoon peak for the various options, is on the right side of the chart. And there's a lot, there's a lot of letters and numbers here, but to cut to the chase. This is the this aisle in the west, it's basically the overall rating of the intersection. So you can, every movement gets rated with the intersection, but that's kind of the takeaway. It's basically for for lack of a better term, it's kind of an average of overall intersection, how that intersection actually operates. So you can see in the morning, that intersection projected operate at a level service E with six, let's call it 65 seconds of delay. And that's kind of that's kind of the grading, it's basically an average motorist delay that experienced that intersection. So then moving through with the various options, it's the option one, the level service D, which is going to break your delay. Option two, still ready to be within even higher delay. Option three is an E, drop back a little bit, it's still a greater delay than what's being proposed. Again, 60, proposal 65 seconds delay, so we get 75, 77, 74 seconds. And then option four is about 76 seconds of delay. So again, what that's showing you is that the proposal is having the less of an impact on the working roadway than these other four options. Similarly, when we jump to the right side, this is the afternoon peak with the projection that intersections anticipated to operate at a level service D. With option one, you can see the intersection predicted to be projected to operate at a level service, at a family level service. Similarly, with option two, it's a family level service. Option three, family level service. Option four, family level service. So again, proposed at a level service D or two letter grades, if you will, better than any of those other proposed by rights uses.
No further questions. Does any member of the work commissioners have a question?
Any questions can board.
Okay. Well, again, I'm me and you and the other one. I guess I might actually just say that it is probably tell me, or engineer as well, so.
Yeah.
Looking for response on that one again. Was Penn dot involved in the traffic study? Do you remember the extent of all, I mean, were they contacted, informed that the traffic study was in progress?
No, no, with respect to this problem, no, there's not a requirement to do that. The way the way it works in state has been, Penn dot gets involved when when you're seeing a highway, I can see from highway, I can see permit from the state. So if you're doing, you know, a study that you're getting access to one of their roads, that's when they they really get involved. Outside of that, generally left to at this level.
Right, so I also need to mention that I happened to have one discussion with Penn dot on the same intersection, and they totally did the same thing that you just said. They did say however, that townsfolk could allow to contact them and you know, have have a share of the information with them and they can decide whether they want pure review self-esteem. In other words, they would think they did, you know, like they have a telephone, but they could do some type of pure review upon request that they had the resources to do that. So that's how they that's been done.
Sorry. With the level service development, especially at the regional regional it would make sense that there may be modifications or changes to the single at 309 Airport Penn dot would be involved. So at a future time, if any, including the changes and modifications to the single property, then that would be that. So the response would change better.
So procedural question. Mr. Calabria just said that they would be involved later. Is it necessary that they're going to be involved in some, in as part of this conditional use of rule?
Typically, I would say, I mean, and I think, and South, you correct me if I'm wrong. I think response to Penn may be involved, and it may be involved if there was a modification proposed at that intersection.
Any other questions?
Just curious, you mentioned all stop signs on practice for street jobs.
Yes.
Where would the stop signs be? This is pretty good for the head.
Yeah, well, I must say, it hasn't gotten to that level of scrutiny yet, if you will. That's that's something that would have to be designed and evaluated if that if that were chosen to be a location to install all the stop signs and stuff like that. And that's that's one thing they actually did in the company's ladder. They did a jury on this one thing, they asked first, the little ones, the elements, that's that's this is progressive in the land development. Yeah, we had to look at it, it has to kind of through, yeah.
Any other non-other question? Is traffic subject? Did it make any comment or?
Yeah, so the this this question always comes up, I have studied over the course of the last couple of years. And obviously, you know, the world is stopped. So what's what's done with the person expected? There were some counts that we had at some locations that predated COVID, which were utilized. And then locations where count data was not available, we had to we had to give up traffic analysis, but then utilize the store data. So Penn dot has data where they've done counts, and we look at that, and an adjustment factor is developed. And then basically, the values were increases, you know, as everyone I'm sure is aware, the values were were lower due to COVID pandemic. And that's pretty much to the industry standard, that's the way all these towers are handling it, that's the way the state is handling it. And not anything is done for that, that's that's the way traffic line development is done. And again, that was discussed with the back company, there was a sharing of information back and forth, the get to a concurrents on the appropriate increase that was that was used for those traffic lines.
Regional maps allocated.
I'm sorry.
Regional maps allocated.
To 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 the at this time, I would say no, I mean, we're still driving, so it's still somewhat down to the COVID pandemic.
Just a quick follow-up, for a second. Correct me if I'm wrong, you did mention that the intersection of putting the four-way practice for street jobs, would it significantly improve anything? Is that correct, or does that make some change?
So what what it does is it alleviates the sightline concern for promoters on practice for the way. So it's a level, a natural level safety evil for that intersection.
Just real quick, you may not have numbers at this time, but would it be fair to say that the current property space is currently unrealized at this point?
That the property itself, correct. I don't have specific numbers on that to say to say whether this was technically, it's what I would say without having run the numbers, yes, like I told you, it's fairly utilized sort of for one, you actually, you'd go to 300 remote out which would generate probably equivalent amount of traffic to what's being proposed here. And then in fact, the fact that you've got 1,200, I think, 1,200 person all rooms in capacity, or if you think about those, you know, kind of that that facility, I would say the average GPO occupancy is two people per vehicle, so if you have 1,200 people, it's you know, then six hundred vehicles, or you're going to be, you're going to be three per vehicle, it's not 400 people, you know, top of this. So you probably, if you ran the numbers, would find that you were equivalent to or seeing what's what's being proposed there.
I I would say my question pretty much pretty accurate on that, I'm just curious, I guess you didn't run some specific numbers, but I appreciate that you did those different scenarios and gave an idea of what the perspective would be of the different alternatives. You know, that conflict back in the day, let's say, used to be very active, they used to have a lot of you know, conferences and events there. And I'm I'm just curious if there was an estimate of what the traffic would have been when that facility was at full tilt, per se. And how that would compare to the proposed?
Yeah, I think I think it's a very similar question to mine, it would be would be pretty consistent with what I just gave. And we did run a specific number on that, I think I ran a hotel, 285 hotel rooms at one point. And over the course of the day, it was with a handful of trips that was being proposed, but again, that that doesn't factor. Even in the mall or facility, those types of man, etc., also on that site, so that obviously would dramatically increase that traffic, you know.
Very good, thank you. Good evening. I have a question regarding surrounding developments being factored into this. I know that you listed several developments in your tax study.
Yes.
I have a question about North White Hill Township. That's a very large warehouse that's to be completed. Did you factor in the traffic that were expecting to come that through your line at the intersection with Ridgeview?
We did not, I don't believe it, again, with respect to scope in this study, that's one of the items that we discussed with the township engineer as far as the nearby developments that should be included. Our study included looks like six nearby developments, sort of traffic specific for those developments. I don't think that it would avoid all one, it was one of the six that can apply to me included. But the study includes in addition to that, to those developments in is what we call a background group rate, so it's kind of like a, it's kind of like a catchall increase on the line as well. And that's it, you know, that that kind of means afterwards, I mean, it's like, technically, you could do a study with it with that background group rate applied, not specifically overall developments. It's kind of like a level of security as far as projections of those traffic lines.
Thank you. And I have a question regarding the queuing at 309 Ridgeview. The increase is expected to go from 738 feet AM peak to 1,065 feet in the built condition. And also, there's the concern of the queuing on the full clock as well. Could you speak to those numbers?
Sure.
And concerns about Ridgeview?
Sure, so the the first one, you said intersection number 309 Ridgeview Drive would be for the westbound left turn movement, so the traffic leading right Ridgeview to the left to the south of the green line. And again, yes, your numbers, the the no built condition was 738 feet and had increased by 300, below 300 feet. So below 1,000 feet, that's 65 feet under projected condition. And that was that was for the the morning peak. And then similarly, that that same movement, the afternoon condition, 343 feet increased to 483 feet, so a 140 foot increase. But again, that the PM, I would say it's left to a discernment, because it's actually easily calculated within the term that that exists out there today. And as far as full of ride, I think the concern from the PECO, and I think it's probably going to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the concern was was just more so the fact that the proximity of full of ride to 309 that the motors basically is going to have to wait just the exact condition exists today, they're going to have to wait for it to get out into that into that queue. Just because the fact that the queue backs up, obviously, past that intersection, so they're going to have to accept what's to the first list of first step. People have to wait, I mean, you probably do have a lot of intersection signs, things like that, but I don't know, it's true. But that's, I think, I figured out what the company's concern was with respect to that.
Thank you, and one other question you asked on the two minutes earlier. I was commenting earlier in this meeting regarding the current land use, that there is not a driveway out of Winchester. I guess I'll piggyback off of that. So you're projecting to have an intersection directly across Winchester, which will create a free flow of traffic from this development into residential neighborhood. Has there been any discussion of moving that may further that answer that it's not straight across from Winchester to discourage people from using Winchester as a freeway? Maybe go right and right out and want to attract sport to discourage the traffic through the neighborhood?
Yeah, so to the best of my knowledge, I haven't heard any discussions to respect to to all the normal access today.
Thank you.
I'll piggyback on that. Since there is no existing exit, why does the exit at Winchester exist, and why couldn't the development be built with, you know, just the old dog exit like the hotel has? That has quickly access to practice for. So why can't we be accessed, like I said, at Winchester?
So I think, you know, one of the one of the bases for for that would be provided is secondary needs and ingress and ingress to the development. Just for the one point of access to full of and and finding to that the single point of of ingress and ingress typically for a plant and a project site of size, you want multiple means for ingress and ingress. Functional operating, I think my question came over here, again, I had one specific calculation. And if I can tell you, it's, you know, my professional opinion, who can know the traffic lines already, and in fact, both of the intersection of operating and operating is a starting from the perspective of the traffic.
So tell me, tell me have any traffic safety standards where they use this part of the traffic in that facility or as part of the traffic in the
Before you answer that, just tell me, you've not sworn in, and it's a usual question of hours to your little test point, the stress of the the objection. You don't know, but you do need to explain. So back to Mr. Walsh's question, standards, they usually, by the county, they're from Saldau, that probably governs all types of standards or roadway movements, turning movements throughout. So we reviewed the layout by the Saldau, now the traffic improvements, there's no all site improvements, close at this time, in that, although, also in, in terms of like square cars, whatever you don't approve. So I have all this, there were no all site improvements proposed at this time, outside of, so outside of the development, there's not shown that the improvements were not evaluated, no, no improvements were evaluated at this time. Thank you. Okay. So I have a list of Callewia, right before the street, sorry, I was going to ask this question, so, except at the top. So what we have is, we have a one page summary, John Hoffman, he referenced about the traffic in that study. And then here we have two pages of PECO or Tony and Callewia's summary of what should require the pants conditional use of Google. So what I would like is for Mr. Callewia to go through these items, but as I already told him, give him the latitude to emphasize whatever areas you may deserve to be emphasized. You know, certainly, if something hasn't been covered, then you still think needs to be covered, as part of the conditional use of Google, please do so. Or if there's any other coverage you want to populate, that Mr. Hoffman may not have already gotten something, please do so.
Mr. Walsh, I'm just going to suggest, since right now we're going to be in applicant's presentation, in a sense, there's going to be a presentation, and as we discussed upfront, Mr. Courtney got the option for his cost of implementation in this case, but certainly if attention upon that, you have, Mr. Callewia, that's not important. Okay, but not in this case.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? There are none. I want to suggest a short break, five minute break, before we go to any more questions or next witness or cross examine, to allow everyone to, to stretch their legs and use the restroom. The restrooms are, I, great.
Men's, women's, men's, women's.
Right out to the left and to the right, and we will re-continue, let's give ourselves, since there's a lot of people getting help, to stretch and use the bathroom, skip ourselves ten minutes.
No other questions for the board, so we would, and then he's over the JBR plastic exam. There it is.
Yes, this is the board.
Lock into the mic.
There we go. I'm sorry, just see how, I didn't hear myself. When different classifications that A, B, C, D, E, and F, that stuff, are those standard definitions in your area of expertise? Yes. Some of the printouts that you can get on different engineering concepts, I really want to, I gave you a definition of people company that that's correct or. A would be minimal delay.
Sure.
B, low levels of delay in the queue.
Correct.
C, intermediate way vehicles wait through more than one signal complication, occasionally back up when they develop. Most still stable and accept.
Or level service C.
C, yes.
I wouldn't agree with that entirely.
What would you define C as?
You defined abortion, whatever, vehicles are waiting through multiple cycles, I think you had said.
Yes.
Generally, level service C generally not be the case.
Your definition of C.
Well, I think I would strike from the, maybe it's the abortion, as you mentioned, from, I think it was. I'll be back.
Are you getting easier on me? I mean, come see, how about D there, delays at the intersection may become extensive, but enough cycles with lower command occurred to permit period of clearance, preventing excessive backups. The D has historically been regarded as the desirable sign of general urban cases.
Can I, can I ask where does C come?
It's a part of transportation, like out of Denver.
So from Denver, Colorado.
I believe it was just a gentleman. If someone asks us for your definition, I'm telling you, you have to agree.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't have a really definition, so I mean, the definition that I would go by would, would be the highway capacity manual's definition for the level service criteria and associated ways, some of this, so I guess what I was going with, with the C, which again, when you went into, you know, multiple, what was the, I'm trying to remember, kind of here, waiting for more than one signal indication yet to get through, like, that's why I said that, I didn't even, that doesn't, that doesn't, to me, that's not a level service C, I don't think that definition is, is accurate, so the problem is this kind of the question of where, as far as where this came from. I think there's some relativity to, to the definition, so I mean, anybody can input something like this, there's some subjectivity to that, and whereas if you, you know, if you rely on highway capacity manual, that is the publication that, that everybody uses to refer to this, that's why I'm following, I don't have definitions.
So you, you don't, highway capacity manual, you don't know what it's, I mean, a lot of times you open the traffic study, you have all those labels up there, you put the letter.
Correct.
I don't have to know what it's been, you put a D, so panel.
Correct, it's, right, it's in the traffic study, and it's creating, and it has to do with the delays associated with going through the public intersection.
You said it's in the traffic study, you have a traffic study there.
Yep.
Now, what a definition of C, they are.
So the definition, again, is, it's not a, it's not an oral definition, it's based on the leg that the motor experiences, so it's, so it's a time damage.
Okay, so you, your traffic studies, I mean, you have different ones, A, B, C, D, E, and I, they're, they're just time delays, right?
Correct.
And just maybe for the, the commissioners back in the, you could maybe elaborate on it, what you're using, you put a C up there, or a D, what do you think?
Sure. So it has to do with the, with the actual A, and it's dependent on whether the intersection is a signalized intersection or an unsignalized intersection. So I, I can read through these out of, out of reports, table nine, in, in my report, the level service criteria, so a level service A for a signalized intersection would be an average delay of less than 10 seconds.
But usually, it's just one second on another.
Sure.
Go ahead, let's see the best.
Sure.
That is on your table.
Table nine.
Table nine. Okay, I got that.
Okay.
So that's the level of service.
Yep.
Panel, if they look at it, I'm not sure what age that D is, table nine.
It's on D eleven.
Go ahead, please, the level service A.
Okay, so A, an A is less than, again, this is number, for a signalized intersection, an A would be less than 10 seconds. A B is between 10 and 20 seconds. A C is between 20 and 35 seconds. A D is between 35 and 55 seconds. An E is between 55 and 80 seconds, and then after this, greater than 80 seconds.
So it's about a minute and a half.
Sure.
And those were for signalized ones.
Correct.
Now, unsignalized. It's almost the same thing, or slightly less than, for a unsignalized ones.
Yeah, they're done, they're done with the same, or some that are slightly less.
Study, you did a traffic study, how much of it was based on actual measurements, that you went out to the scene, they didn't want to base it off other traffic studies?
So the, the underlying criteria in traffic, preparation of traffic study, is, is really the existing traffic ones. So those, we collected this existing traffic ones, and, and that's basically, basically go to the intersection and capitalize that they're going through the intersection.
Okay, so you did that for all of yours.
Correct.
Do you remember when you did that, period of time?
So the counts were done, and, and, and this is, pretty much everything in town is, is, is going to be standard protocol with respect to the preparation of the traffic study, so generally, generally, what you look at is the morning period, so what can you think of as typical rush hour, going to the P, the P period in the morning, and similarly, you do the same thing in the evening, that's when you'll find highest on the roadway during those periods, so the other parts, they are obviously less flying, so it's less than.
I wanted to get to that part later, but this one was, when I said, when did you, March 10th to the 20th, or what part of the year was that?
So that's within the table two, within, within the study.
Correct.
And, and it's got, it's got the dates when the counts at those intersections were done. So they were, depending, again, if you remember, the previous study, I said we had some historical data at some intersections, so there's some, some counts that were done in June, and then the, the analysis of the counts were done in October.
Right, but now, I know it's a typo in your table two, for Route 309 in Ridgefield, sort of one of the pages, it says, traffic counts were done in June of 2017. So they were about four years ago.
Correct. Because, because those were, again, this goes back to the whole COVID pandemic, so what happened was with, with the onset of the COVID pandemic, it dramatically affected traffic lines, as they know, traffic lines were dramatically down. So the industry practice standard had become, if there is historical traffic data that's available, that is generally preferred data to use, because I can do it now, now, and the lines are down, but there's still, even though things are getting back to them, mostly they're still down, because I think the world that we live in has changed, there's a lot of people moving forward that are going to be telecommuting, into that, so the lines are down, so there's still no backup to brief pandemic levels.
But, oh, when I said that you actually take them, that June of 2017, the four-year rule.
Correct.
Is that somebody else's traffic study?
No, that was a traffic study.
Okay.
I prefer, I prefer the project.
No, sure.
Correct.
But it is four years ago.
That's correct.
Okay, and then, next one, Bulldog Ridgefield, you did October of 2020.
Correct.
Now, that's still, it's, you never know when the pandemic ended, but.
That's, yeah, that, that would, okay, we reconsidered that, the pandemic counts, that, that was, that pandemic.
What do you want?
Basically, what it did consists of taking historical data, again, so, you know, opening count stations that, you know, in, in this case, I believe that they were all end-to-end count stations, so we would look at that, and then we would do a count, a current count at that same location, so we could look at what difference in traffic was compared to a pre-pandemic count, and, and a council, and then that gives you the parameter to make an adjustment, and you apply a percentage increase to, to the traffic lines accordingly, based on what you find, to do that, and that's all part of, it was, that was very, uh, very, sort of late, I haven't discussed with the collections in here as well, it's, it's pretty much standard practice for doing traffic studies now, whether it's at the municipal level, whether it's at the state level, that's, that's the way it's, uh.
Right, yeah. But in October, when you went out and actually counted the number of cars.
Correct.
And then, just what number, if you find that were 60 car, what's the pandemic adjustment at, at 10?
It's, it's a percentage.
Remember what the percentage was?
I want to say it was, um, probably between 20 to 30%.
You think it was that high that it does?
That's going to be just adjustments.
Which almost a third.
Correct. That's correct.
Then, the next one, again, goes June back to 2017, was that another study you did four years ago?
Yes, that was part of the same traffic study.
Okay. And all the rest of them there on your table two.
Yep.
They were on November 15th to 2020.
Correct.
Um, and you did the traffic for the hour between like 7:30 or 4:50 and 5:15, with a number of cars.
Well, so, so that, so that hour that's contained within that table, that's the, that's one hour, that's the one peak hour, so what we do is we, the counts were conducted between 7:00 to 9:00 AM in the morning and 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the afternoon, so that's typically the range that you would look at for that morning afternoon D, and then what we do is we evaluate that time period and find what's the highest volume hour, because that's, for the purposes of, of all the analyses that's associated with the preparation of traffic study, you may down into the highest, so you might, what is the highest hour volume, that's what we're studying.
So you did like a two-hour study, thought there was like 30, there were 50 cars in the one hour, 7:30 to 2:00, so you took the second as the 7:30 car.
Correct. General student, yes.
All right. And when you listed over there, intersection peak hours, that was based on your traffic study, that's how you got the peak hour by the count you actually did.
That's correct.
So you, I was questioning, I guess you had the six other, I think you said the six other developments back there, you did, you extracted studies from those six other developments.
Um, for the most part, to the best of our collection right now, yes, that's, that's what we would do, is we would, we would get excerpts from those traffic studies, so in other words, we would coordinate, you know, with, with the, with the task staff, and get those studies, and then pull out the, the traffic, the urban traffic lines, and start showing that, and then add. There's, there are, there are instances where there may not have been a study on development identified, if that's the case, then we would just find out, you know, what it is, it's a warehouse, a residential development, whatever it is, and developer traffic lines for that particular development.
I guess, sure, you take the jumbled developments, just a little bit up here.
Yep.
We probably had a traffic study.
Did.
Um, what year was that traffic study, you know?
The last revision on that, it looks like, was November of 2015.
All right, so, so you, I guess I'm having a hard time here, and you take, let's call it jumbled traffic study from November 15, now, six years later, I don't even.
So, because the, the piece of information that we're using from that study is the traffic associated with that particular development, so that's, that's a little more, you know, that to add in to our models.
And, and that traffic study that they did, what's the traffic account, that's under the manual, what they're anticipating the traffic to do with that, from their development.
The portion that we pull out, yes.
It's just.
Correct, so in other words, if, if a residential development, you know, 100 U, so 100 U is sparing, takes that number first, that's it.
Right.
So that's, that's the information you pull out, and then we add that, and layer that into our project.
So you, you don't, you attract, maybe if you attract a study, they're pulling their numbers, so probably, on how many, that's generally, if you have a warehouse, a gas station, whatever.
As far as their, their development's traffic generation, yes, they do, they do the same, generally the same process, they do existing traffic counts, and then grow the volume to the future, you're going to add their traffic count, but as far as the generation from that development, it's, it's literally not used in the first direction.
Now, I believe, just saying. When you had, the, the other options, uh, apparently the first gentleman came up with all four alternative plans, and you had the tables, I believe they were probably tables, exhibit A15 or A6.
Correct.
The chip, trip generation summaries, and I believe yours were showing that those other four would generate four trips than this proposal.
Correct.
Correct, but they also, when you have, I believe, when you have on the internet, uh, for the different options, if, if we go down, like you said in the first column there, down to the one who, for 309 in Ridgefield, where it's ILOs, so the benefit of everybody, what is ILOs?
So again, that, that's the overall intersection level service.
Okay, now, you can see, the project here is E, option one's E, 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 everything is E, and you have B, then you have two down with X.
Correct.
Now, when you use any of those answers, family, so you use those, they, they generate, but they would have also generated failures, correct?
They.
Maybe options 22, 3, and 4 all have X.
They do, correct.
Okay, so that, that would have created still a problem in 309 in Ridgefield, correct? A big problem, there were plenty of.
Well, right, so, so that's, that was kind of the main point, is that this develops a level service D for that intersection, these other scenarios would be, these other viary scenarios would be a level service F, that's correct.
Right, basically, they'd be an F because it covered your traffic, as you showed.
Correct.
Will be a non-traffic.
Correct.
Um, and then, the same thing down at Ridgefield and Bulldog, uh, Bulldog behind the plants, you're showing that at least in the opening year, uh, of weekday at 8:00, there will always be A service, and for the evening, it's A, and then it goes to F, E, and.
Correct.
Correct. So when, when you use those other ones as possibles, they still would have had traffic issues that would have had to be in, in a dress center, Atlanta.
Just even though they're permitted by, not, not necessarily, they're all such intersections.
They're just using.
They're all such intersections.
And you don't think you have to do any of that?
Really, perfectly spot on, it's not a plan, you know, not a design, such you can acquire.
Well, not, but if you have created failures everywhere, and you're something that's to improve, it results in failure. That possible? The, uh, in the letter that I believe, the subtext importance, is the one that I believe was from PIPAC, uh, I believe it was on page 15, comments concerning the traffic study, um, like 3A, you said, the following comments pertaining to the Route 309 in Ridgefield Drive.
I'm sorry, this, which, 3, 3A said?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
It's, it looks like it's on page 15.
All right. Okay.
These are the comments for the day, during the peak, during the AMP, what time is that, turn, C surpasses, both the base condition and the projected, and then goes through a little bit there. Have you addressed that at all? Because everything, the delay expected to the AMP goes from E to F. Have you gone, followed these, the comments, these comments to the management?
No, we, we have not responded to this comment.
Okay, this time, I think that's.
Yes, no.
Okay. And I think the one commission member said, I think they were looking at the same thing, with the peak, the westbound turn goes from 738 feet to 1,065, so none of those in here have been, it says at the bottom, we recommend that microstimulation of these intersections be prepared.
Yeah.
And, and, like the letter, uh, P, on the next page, we note that the clearance intervals are proposed to be revised for the total build of build conditions, provide justification for the revised yellow and all red clearance to do that.
No, that's, that's a, the clearance time has to do with the signal timing, so that's a calculation that we do, so I think they're just questioning, they identify that, uh, that it is different than the existing signal permit plan.
Okay, and there's a few more on this page that goes through, at the Ridgefield Bulldog, the next one, B, they're saying, again, uh, microstimulation of the intersection should be repaired and prepared, that's not been done yet, right?
It has not.
Is that something that's intended to be done in the lane development plan?
That's something that would be discussed, uh, with the management's ear, on, on how that, that may ever be addressed.
Okay.
Take that side of the conversation.
Okay, and the next one, C, the last sentence, so developers should identify proposed improvements, including stop sign locations, pedestrian combinations, restriking, etc., that has to do a lot with the, the spring consequences.
The always.
Right, but none of that's been done.
No, that was, we, we testified that earlier, that was, it was a question, that would be, that would be for the deadline, and, um, I don't believe that.
I mean, it says, proposed improvements included, you know, stop sign, but pedestrian combinations, because there's a lot of kids walking there, not that it's been done.
Correct.
It's not. The next one, they had a D, we note that the cycle plan included with the CR is, is not consistent with the latest plans. Has that been right?
No, this, again, it's, all that, the language better term, typo comment, but, but, a title, a diagram, the language better term, it's just what it is, it's just a, a pre consideration of the cycle plan. It's changing, it's different from, from what's the current plan.
It was, the interest is, it should be updated.
Correct.
Okay, so that has to be done too.
That's correct.
Then, then the next one, also, E, but presented to the total. then the next one, also E, uh, "But presented to the total site grid, assigned beach, route vehicles should be checked in from the movement percentages." Was that not it?
No.
Uh, the next one.
I'll conclude that, again, none of these items have been addressed, they've addressed it already. We don't have to go through everyone.
Okay.
You're welcome.
No, I, if you say that none of the things here on these, these couple pages, 15, 16, 17, have been addressed.
That's true, we can have this on the slide.
That's correct. Um, and I believe one of the, sort of, that the exit now goes out of the wind shift. Did they store anything else about what you could do not have a shift exit there? I think the worst of the questions, I know you said it's preferential to have two, but to do something else than the crackers toward the intersection of the fog and Ridgefield, modify a little bit, it's only needed that one case, like a hotel.
Again, I'm not, yeah, I'm not aware of anything, anything to do with that, respect that.
But from a, from a traffic view, you didn't do any analysis of what it would be like if it didn't go there.
I did not.
When we say that it was coordinated with the township engineer, it's not the traffic study itself coordinated, just the study area is coordinated. Where do you want me to do a traffic study? They didn't tell you how.
No, it's, it's not how we do the traffic study. They, they trust the network, uh, it's, it's looking at the study area and some of the parameters and there's certain things that we talk about, like COVID, adjusted track line, something like that. So it's a little bit more of the study area, but it's kind of the brand, what's going to be on that.
But I think some of the questions, I love the warehouse, some genre, we all know, but it's here, we've got trucks or something. But if there's going to be a warehouse down very close to this 309, none of that has been included, correct?
That was not directly included, again, that would have been covered in any particular background or factors applied to traffic.
Just to come a moment here. On your table one, that I believe you had used at one juncture, the B that, this is obviously the Route 309 and Ridgefield one, the ILOS, you know, projected is going to be an E. E for the rugged hour of morning, but a B on the, on the E. The existing conditions are both C, so that's the big difference there, correct? And it looks like, when I look at that, the ILOS, 309 Ridgefield, currently it's a C. And that 30.7, that's the number seven, that's correct.
That's the, that's related, that's correct.
Correct.
Now, the one thing, one way to do a comparison, it's not really the existing condition. You want to compare the no build condition to the build condition. That, that's, that's typically the problem, that's not certainly what the existing condition is.
Well, that's what you're saying, maybe existing condition.
There's three problems, there's the existing conditions, there's the base conditions, and there's projected conditions. So the existing conditions are only right now.
Right.
The base conditions are the no build condition, so that's the future. It's basically a future year condition without the particular proposed development. And the projected condition and initial traffic associated with the development.
And I think we come up with that, that D 50.8, which is a lot longer than the current 30.7.
Yeah, you're right with that. So how, so basically what's done, it hasn't been, we're talking about with the nearby developments and background growth. So you, you take an existing account and then forecast that out to a future year, uh, which is, which is generally the development for most developments, is what you look at. So you do, you then do a calculation based on that future year without the particular site track. And then do a calculation with this track.
And on your, the next page, I think it was on your traffic study at the bottom, actually it's just page one. The table one, where it says, it looks like roadway characteristics within the study. Like Ridgefield, you say not available, yeah, you say with traffic. Why is that like not available?
There was no, generally those, those out there, driving lines, that's over the course of the day, gets pulled from historical data that it has, and they don't have this system to have it for.
So that's historic data, so you didn't do any of those, so. Like the one of Woburn says, Route 309, 17,068,4, that's not something you came up with.
We did not come up with it, no, that's correct.
But you couldn't go out and do a traffic study on Ridgefield to see what it was at the present time?
Could we do it?
And sure. You just chose not to do Ridgefield, oh, we didn't do it perhaps because it's not really applicable to the analysis that was done in traffic.
It's in traffic, so you're looking at the daily count, just gives you a general idea what the daily traffic is. But again, the analysis of the on the P areas.
If you did P areas, what if there's a P area at 2 o'clock at night, you wouldn't have known that, would you? Because you didn't do a study for.
And you're thinking either of you, no, no, again, in the end, the, the, that's, that's one of the parameters that would work out with the township engineer when we're doing it. And I think key without the small top side, you know, on these traffic studies, to know that likely would have finding the traffic lines at that time, period, being high compared to the typical 7946 track hour, which you know.
You're finished, Mr. Burford? Very good. Mr. President, we'd rather your ways. My clock is showing about 9:20, and I believe based on the code call we established earlier on, well, first of all, before we go to the support group, are there any follow-up questions to the board commissioners based upon questions that are, through this conference, in addition?
Any questions?
I think two primary tables that have a lot of pages, 38 and 38-1, to have most of the time. There's some information about the current site, the current site. Is it, did it get added, could it be added?
You, you referred to the trip, the trip summary table that was on the basis?
Yeah, right now I'm on page 38, that's the trip summary.
Yeah, so you're correct, it's not, the current site is not included as part of that.
Do you have that information and would it be worthwhile adding it to the second page?
Um, I do not have all of that.
Oh, you have a question, Mr. Burford?
Very good. We have roughly the 30, 40 minutes before the large stop. Support group, we'd like to present a case. I want to see that from the board.
Uh, you can absolutely start, but we do have a large stop at 10 o'clock, so if we don't finish, we'll have to recommit.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Now, I'm sure, I'm saying that this week, this list, or if it goes, I can put in that one, this one's a bigger part.
Maybe I'm reading too much into it, but I think the address of general locations and, you know, and surprise my knowledge. So I take that knowledge and do an acceptance of standard.
Very good.
That's correct.
Would you say your name in the room?
Yes, my name is David Burr.
Where do you reside?
Team 36, Spotters Railroad. Yeah, it's about 3/10 mile, probably a quarter mile.
How long have you lived?
I lived in that address approximately 34 years. Prior to that, been 10 years in Parkland, Orange, which is an affected area as well.
Very interesting, this are, really, someone gave a, a similar submission, correct?
Yes, that is.
You have certain concerns, uh, you feel the proportionally where, you can give us synopsis of those issues.
Sure. Uh, a lot of the testimony throughout the fact that was done during the pandemic, that is one concern, that there's a lot of factory that went into it, activated by the traffic engineer. In addition to that, I'm concerned that six traffic studies were used for building this case. Each one of those traffic studies has uncertainty associated with it. Three of those traffic studies were very significant in the terms of the volume of traffic that they handled. One was the traffic court warehouses, where there are 500 trucks per day, and the west side of Ridgefield and 309, which is an acknowledged problem even in the summary that is provided in their traffic study. The other is Hill's Way Chapter, which has about 300 dwellings with probably five or six hundred automobiles associated with it. The other is Ridge Farm, which has approximately 800 dwellings, even more vehicles. Then there are two other warehouses, Chapman Road Warehouse and Houston Road Warehouse. And of course, Parkland Manor Phase 4, which is on Traffic Court Road on the, on the other side of 309, on the west side of 309. Then as Commissioner Kelly pointed out, the North Whitehall Warehouse complex was admitted not to be a part of the study. So there's a lot of traffic studies, one missing, and all of these pandemic factors and factory associated. My concern is that, how would this traffic study in terms of the error, the uncertainty associated with it? I'm an engineer by background, my background tells me that when you add, you add six or seven things that have unknowns, the cumulative unknown is obviously greater than any one of those. And that is my concern.
Based on some experience, I believe.
It's not going to work. It's not going to work. What I picked. Can I just briefly inquire, is Mr. Burford involved in this expert business?
No.
Could be a factor, just a factor. You say it was in your current quarters.
Sure. I, I'm kind of one's year by background with a business degree as well. My job, I've been a progress for 38 years, was in process control engineering. And I managed a group of individuals who were responsible for the safety system, safety analysis of plants that we built, specifically high-fitting plants, systems, science, technology, and the people in the plants from disasters.
Very good, thank you.
Other questions or issues that you might the board could consider for giving this, for giving this part?
Yes, one question, again, had to do with the accuracy in all of the factors. Another concern I had was the audience just listed on Ridgefield Drive, Bulldog Drive, and Commerce Square. That was aggressive for working lines, and those, those items, I guess the data was not available.
Sure, it was, uh, April 10, page 12, planning officially being the chairman open with, there are the problem intersections, looking at the chart, there are probably 309 and Ridgefield and Spring House, which are in the industry. They show several instances of intersections upgrading from E to F ratings. My concern is that, so if we want to really understand what raise E to, the E and F mean, at one point, Mr. Hoffman said it was a failing grade, you don't want to get it at school. And he termed it later on as a delay time. Some, there's got to be some, I'll say qualitative explanation for what that means beyond delay times that maybe the layman can understand. Is there some, I can ask the question, but that's my concern. Qualitatively, what do E and F mean? I believe the attorney had asked for that, but it wasn't given an answer. Any remaining issues?
My final concern is that all set, the summary page, item eight on page 17 states, "All study intersections will operate at an acceptable overall intersection LOX D or better under the 2025 projected condition scenarios with the exception of Route 309 and Ridgefield Drive during the AMP hours." If you look at that table, there are several Es and X on that table, not just that one intersection. And maybe you are referring to an overall intersection designation, which is E, LOS, I think. The ILOS. But don't the specific turning lanes and issues matter as well? I mean, if you, if you're sitting at Ridgefield on the east side trying to get to 309, that's a pretty, pretty tough intersection right there. And it might have an F, but if you go down to the ILOS, you end up with a, with a D or a D. I don't think you could just look at, in my, the overall ILOS. You need to look at the various turning lanes and so forth. Again, that's, that's my perception, but I think it is, it is valid perception. As the driver in that area, because I know what that perception is through experience. One other concern I had was the timing of some of these traffic. One other concern I had was the timing of some of these traffic studies or these, uh, it was stated that the, uh, the time period between seven thirty and eight thirty might be the P period. For certain roads, it can not be true. If you look at Crackersport Road, for instance, right by the middle school, there are cars lined up forever on Crackersport Road at about eight fifteen, eight forty, uh, for children to be dropped off and later on picked up at the end of the day. Similarly, the buses are all there, possibly further projection. I just wonder if that is, uh, an area that needs to be studied as well. Thank you.
You have to be driven on those roads for three, whatever, thirty four years. And when you get to that Ridgeview and Bulldog, what has your experience been, no matter what time of day it is?
Ridgeview and Bulldog is just an absolute horror show. There's no place for cars to act, and you call it courtesy, but people aren't always courteous. And there's no place, there's probably too car less there, uh, for people to get into that spot, okay? Uh, the negotiation is sometimes friendly, sometimes not so friendly. And if you look at the other side of 309, once the trucks start coming, that is going to be a disaster too. And in the east side, because the trucks, there's only one truck lane there between, uh, Houston Road and 309 for a truck, the line, I've got the line. And there's, if there's trucks and cars behind it, and there's a competing traffic for that left lane coming from the east, that's a very difficult intersection. But I don't even think there are As, there are Es and Fs reflect, right, which is why I'm sorry to say.
But if a person coming in on Bulldog is trying to make a left at the intersection, to go out on a free, not. Is the traffic back up on Ridgeview that they can't even come out and make a left, because there's never an over?
Absolutely, especially at rush hour times in the morning and in the, in the afternoon at rush hour. Uh, I think, I, I can say that, I think ninety percent of the people in this audience will agree. The traffic study is a study of numbers and data, but it doesn't have real life experience. And that's one of the problems that a traffic study has. Uh, it doesn't reflect the reality of people's experience.
One more second. I have one more thought and I kind of lost. Yes. Thank you. Mr. President, do you have any examination, Mr. Herr?
I do not.
Does the board have any questions, Mr. Herr?
Any questions from the board?
Would you care to comment, um, based on the fact that, uh, sixty citizens have recommended this for, and I am getting concerns on Winchester. Um, not just in general, but, uh, you know, the problems at Ridgeview and Bulldog. Which had, and then practice support the Spring House, um, concerning that's an generated traffic on Winchester. In other words, don't be your normal expect of the traffic on Winchester. I mean, has everybody come, or you have a few, uh, problem intersections that would just, you know, increase the traffic on Winchester compared to what one might expect?
I'm going to get, I think, well, outside the struggle, testimony, and factors out of the house. I would not hear, but I don't think it's about it.
Why? Why? Why?
Can I ask, please, the, the audience referring, the attorney's agent?
After a minute of taking some, I'm setting here all of Mr. Moore's question. So in light of Mr. Preston's objection, I think we could recede.
Could you please comment on, uh, an opinion submitted, uh, to the V O C by many citizens that people prefer to drive on Winchester due to congestion that had noted at Ridgeview and Bulldog and others that noted at practice work and Spring House.
My thought then, based upon objections, Mr. Preston, is that it's hard to acknowledge, but Mr. Corcoran and Mr. Herr, he's not being offered an expert witness. And as a factor in this, I can imply any factors that may occur. And since we're at the floor right now, ask some questions, uh, I think it's fine for a court answer.
Thank you. Um, yes, I've spoken to many people on Winchester, and it is a very, very big concern there is that the traffic there, uh, some people term it a speedway, uh, the traffic there is very heavy. Uh, there are many, many garages where people back out onto the, uh, onto the road. There are many walkers along that area, there are many bus stops for children. Uh, there's a park on Winchester where children go to the playground, they, they, uh, they actually, you know, drive their bikes there and so forth. Uh, some of that area doesn't have sidewalks. Uh, the Winchester, because there's three, there's three routes out of that development, proposed development. One is Bulldog, so you go off to Bulldog to Ridgeview and it's, you know, okay, just as we described here. The other route out is you can actually go down all the way to Crackersport to Spring House Road. And there you got the classic mirror there, telling you if anybody's coming from one direction or the other, especially you can't see because of the turnpike overpass. So you got, now you're going to get this, uh, this driveway coming out of this development directly across Winchester. And people are going to blow up Winchester, and then they're going to find their way either turning off the Baldwin Drive or get to Ridgeview perhaps, or they're going to continue to go on Winchester and find a neighborhood out on the Baldwin Avenue. And, uh, that's one way, Forty First Street, Forty First Street, whatever. And another route would be to, to going east and continue to go on Winchester. So Winchester, I think, is going to be the E ball highway in neighborhood, if people don't take Parkland. I mean, it's, it's like, you know, driving to see the path that least exists, like water does. And they're soon going to find out that, unfortunately, for the people on Winchester, that's going to be the path that least exists. That's what I had to say about that. The, I, I did remember what I kind of lost there for a moment, if I can just make one more statement. And that is, traffic studies give you numbers, they give you data, they have nothing to do with how safe pedestrians are, how traffic volumes affect the people in the neighborhood, the children, uh, the, the people that are walking, people that are pushing. There are people that are actually pushing strollers on the streets because there's no titles. So you see mothers with a stroller and a baby in a stroller, and a dog that's tied to the stroller itself, okay? So increase the traffic in that area, and how are we going to deal with this safety problem? The, the ES 350, that's eighteen, talks about, uh, compliance for the, uh, traffic volumes that result in congestion and delays and so forth. That's traffic, you know, that's accidents and so forth, and that's serious. But it says nothing about what there, highest requirement is, and that is the public, okay, to keep them safe. And that's covered it all by a contract sign. That's all I have to say.
I would think we're about eighteen minutes away from the large stop, and I'll ask Mr. Corcoran, do you anticipate that Mr. Herr's testimony will be finished at that time?
I don't think it would, I'd rather have it written down, you know, people go all the way back to you. You know, I think we're only going to get half.
Certainly this is going to have to be a continued hearing or any sort of situation, because even if Mr. Herr had finished, the whole comment, the topic.
If we only get half, it's to go back and beat someone that, what the threat everybody is pressing to finish, so.
Your preference is to go through the board for your decision on that thing?
I, I personally think it makes sense to cut here and then refresh our next, um, reconvene again.
Very good. If we do it here. Mr. Corcoran, do you want to continue, Mr. Herr, the witness to the next hearing? The hearings, if they continue, will not be completed this evening. And at this point, I do not believe there's any time frame specifically coordinated by board, by county staff. Uh, just because that are a bit cumbersome, so for everyone's education, that I've worked out over the next couple of days or week. And we anticipate that there'll be public notice in the city manner that previously had occurred, newspaper, mailings, website, social media, and so on. And certainly the public is welcome to come back at the next hearing, and we would anticipate at that point, there's certainly will be an opportunity by the psychic chief for everyone to speak. And the applicant, of course, we would anticipate being here. Now, we'll run it for the record unless the applicant would agree to a timing. Uh, we anticipate that this continued hearing will be in forty five days, this meeting, the latest. President, what do you?
Attorney's agent, particularly on this discussion meeting, is there any other requirements for the structure of the equipment, uh, to a chair?
No.
Take your motion to the chair. Do you have a motion on the fourth, Commissioner Hall, do I get a second? Second from Commissioner Walco, right two here, Commissioner Walco, uh, hang, we'll call it, please, again. Mr. Sett. Commissioner Walco. Commissioner Walco. Commissioner Hall. All right, motion to the chair, it's not good evening, everybody, thank you.